Service. And she said, man, thanks for calling your phone and Jennifer.
Wrong number.
I'm sorry, that's what you say, which Jennifer? No, unmarried one in West End girl. Don't ask me. She, she actually went as far as to go and call my home. That I haven't had in your. Which goes. That was nine twenty. Just on home. I think you did say everyone's. I thought, I listen, I don't have so many acts if I've got to have. Andrew, Jim has put it on there. We're not really so. There. That was an option. In. Well, since. That really won't. Let's see. I mean, historic. It was true. Well, let's hear you like. Because they were much bigger than you. No, come in.
How did?
Yeah, we, yeah, some people were saying.
Oh.
Yeah. I. Fantastic. So down. Uh. She keep doing what's on.
Hey, board members. Just one thing, we got the Baker forms here. And. If you could plan on going, Caitlin just highlighted, we'll use the highlighting sections. And. And I, 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 oh, pens, do we have any extra pens?
Oh, I, I like.
I purposely didn't bring one because I've been restocking my support.
And, and, and I would, at this Baker thing, I would be surprised if dinner was a, was a good option.
Actually, I love it.
Yeah, that was a, that was a major, uh.
Is it in the conference?
It, it is, yeah. Now, I don't know where. That's, that's what the conferences will be at, at Virginia, at Richmond, conventions.
Is it the Mary?
I will see hotels, but there's two hotels right across the street.
She moved.
Between the Mary.
I'm just gonna say, oh, you saw that behind? Doctor.
Yeah, I just. That's.
I've never.
Who would do that?
Okay, can you call my business?
In the.
Stop.
Well, hey. It's, it's, this Ethan, he's always, I mean, he's too here.
No, she's not here. She's gonna, she's gonna be tied fifteen five.
Okay, I was sitting there, all right. All right, folks, y'all ready to go? I call this regular meeting as Louisiana County Board of Supervisors' order. We'll begin with flag allegiance, followed by a moment of silence. I find allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands. One nation, united, indivisible, universal, universal. Thank you very much. Alrighty, uh, do we have any additions that you left?
No, no additions. The one thing I would. Uh, deletion, um, have I minutes of July sixth, we need to make some revisions to the meeting minutes. I would request that we pull them from consideration and put them, we'll move them back to August seventeenth.
Okay, any others?
Nothing else.
None? Alrighty, do we have an adopt, adoption of the agenda with the changes still made?
I know that we adopted, ended with the changes still made.
Motion made by Mr. Booker, seconded by Mr. O'Brien. All in favor, say aye. Opposed, chair votes out, motion passes four zero one, Ms. Seeger is only one. Uh, next up is county administrator.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, uh, it feels like it's been a, been a while. I guess it has been, it's been about a month now, so welcome back. Um, a few announcements, we have a new, uh, new staff member in HR, Mary Maray. Um, she started on July twelfth, that's as a human resource generalist. Uh, we're happy to have her on board and, and a welcome addition to the human resources department. Um, also, so the Louisiana County Fair is coming up here, I think, August. Say it again, eighteen through the twentieth. Um, but i- in reference to that, Saturday, August twentieth, from four to eleven P M, the fair board is looking for individuals. Um, minimum of five adults ages eighteen years and older to help, um, with part, to be parking attendants. So if any of you all know, anyone interested to assist, whether it's a group or anything like that, to assist the Louisiana County Fair Board with parking. Um, they want to get folks registered by August twelfth, so they make sure they got adequate, adequate help for that. And then again, too, the Louisiana County Fair, uh, will be, uh, August, um, eighteenth through the twentieth. Um, certainly, you all have heard, um, uh, on Tuesday, August second, um, at approximately five thirty A M, dispatchers. Uh, for the Louisiana County Sheriff's Office and Communication Center received a nine one one call for a structured fire with an individual trapped inside. And a huge, uh, huge special thanks to deputies William White, Frank Harris, and Jordan C. Allen, they're the three that responded to the call. Um, because of the heavy smoke, those deputies, they were the first ones there, they entered, um, they entered the, the residence and got out an eighty-three year old woman. Um, not long after, um, they got the individual out, um, there was an explosion in there, so if it wasn't for the, for the brave and, and just. Just non hesitation of, of those deputies to take care of it, it could have been a different, different circumstance, so certainly, uh, huge, huge thank you to those individuals. Uh, we had some recent ribbon cuttings on August second, um, so we had three sixty Health and Wellness, uh, nurse practitioner Shannon Miller. She's up at fifty-five seventy Richmond Road, which is kind of the old model home, uh, development up there, right there in two fifty, not too far from two fifty and fifteen. Uh, also, ribbon cutting for Center Yourself Holistics, um, Megan Blevins, she's a massage therapist, she is also up at that center. Uh, Ms. Schmack and, and, and the women in business, women in business group were up there and they were supporting them and doing ribbon cutting for both of these new businesses in the county. And, uh, congratulation to a couple of Louisiana businesses celebrating five years, locally, uh, local eats, Amy Myers, the owner up there, uh. Uh, seventy-four Joshua Lane, uh, outside of the Lake Monticello Fire and Rescue Area, uh, and I can't remember what that center is called right there, but anyway, Amy Myers of locally, she's been in business five years. And then also Sacred Acres, uh, Alpaca Farm, Mary Jane Capper's owner, and she's on, uh, sixty, sixteen, three ten James Madison Highway. So, good for them to be in the business for five years. And we are upcoming meetings that we have, August seventeen, uh, at seven P M, we have a regular meeting here in the Performing Arts Center. Wednesday, September seventh, at five P M, we have a regular meeting here in Performing Arts Center. And then Wednesday, September twenty-first, at seven P M, we have a regular meeting, Performing Arts Center, and one thing we don't have on there, just as a reminder. Um, the board supervisor's planning retreat, which is going to be Saturday, August twenty-seventh, uh, we're going to have that at the Louisiana County Library, um, and it. We're working on a final agenda, but it's going to be, you know, eight thirty, well, it'll start at nine and it's going to be an eight hour day, but we'll probably start at eight thirty with some, with some, you know, just some snacks and breakfast items and stuff like that. Um, I sent the board an email about, uh, um, our facilitator, Charles Harper, uh, with Virginia Institute of Government, had some questions that he would like for the board members to fill out to kind of. Just kind of help with the retreat and understand, kind of, you know, where the board wants to go from there. And we would really like to have those back no later than this Friday. So if you have any questions on that, please reach out to myself, uh, Ms. Harris or Ms. Solis, and I'd be happy to answer any questions the board has.
Alrighty, thank you very much, Mr. Dog. Alright, I will now open up the first round of public comment. Anyone wish, wishing to address the board, please step to the microphone, state your name and address. Please keep your comments as five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time?
Hi, I'm Valerie Helen, answering seventeen, Cleveland Drive, and I'm. Uh, I've spoken at this, um, meeting before, uh, addressing not only planning commission, but also the board supervisors. About the Johnston M L C, uh, plan for a, um, contractor's, uh, storage unit, sixty-one thousand square feet. Which would be sandwiched between Lake Monticello and Acre Village. These are two residential areas, the area where I live in, Cleveland Drive. Is one of the, the more desirable addresses in Louisiana County. And we, I've talked to every single one of my neighbors, nobody's in favor of this. Um, we, we feel that this is going to affect our property values considerably, and we're once again asking the board. Not to, uh, continue with this, to, uh, to re, uh, rescind, uh, the approval that was given back in June. And to approve the C M P, uh, twenty-two oh one. Uh, I've also spoken with a lot of people at Acre Village, and I'm very disappointed at how few were even aware. Of, of this plan, and I think a big part of it is because we don't have a newspaper like the Daily Progress, we have a weekly, uh, the Louisiana Review. And unfortunately, we don't have a whole lot of news that. So I, even though, you know, the letter of the law says that the county has to notify adjacent properties, I think more effort needs to be done to keep the community informed of what's going on. So thank you very much for listening to our.
Anyone else?
Board Chairman, my name is Corbin Flynn, three nineteen Shiloh Church Road. Uh, I want to speak specifically on a couple of topics, one of which, the invalidity of the June fifteenth meeting. Uh, due to process, not following process, not following procedure, um, from the very beginning to the end. Uh, but more so, I want to talk about leadership, that's you guys, all of you and ladies. Uh, as leaders. We are to lead by example. A couple of you are teachers or have been teachers. So you have come across thousands of students. Some of you are business owners, you've come across many, many employees. Most of you probably are parents like myself. And, uh, leaders are supposed to lead by example. Those that follow, especially kids, look at us as to how we conduct ourselves. And you guys, the board, are in a position of leadership of almost thirty thousand residents here in Louisiana County. You can either lead right, or you can lead wrong. Leading up to the June fifteen meeting, the administration made a litany of mistakes, I'm not going to go into them, but you guys are all well aware of it, and I know in your heart. You know that they made mistakes, they know they made mistakes. But when you make a mistake, you correct the mistake. Making a mistake and not doing anything is like lying and then having to tell another lie to back up the lie that you gave. A mistake after mistake after mistake. So, is this what we want? It, uh, according to, uh, Mr. Payne's last meeting, July sixth, do we want to just wing it? Is that what we're going to do as a county? Is that what we want to tell all of the students, all of the people, that we basically can do whatever we want? And if we do whatever we want, what does that tell in our kids? It's okay to break rules, it's okay to cheat in school, it's okay to talk for more than five minutes in a public hearing, uh, you know, just because it's process. I'm not going to do that, I could, but then that would make me a hypocrite. When my five minutes is up, I'm going to stop talking. But you guys have an opportunity, it's not an easy thing to do, to stand up and say, hey, we made a mistake and we're going to fix it. What you're being told is, don't say anything, don't do anything, don't even talk to Corbin Flynn, because we have made mistakes. And we don't want to make more mistakes than what we've already made, just the sheer fact of admitting a mistake. Is wrong, according to Mr. Payne, he doesn't even want you to say, yeah, we made a mistake, because then, oh my gosh, that would be on record. You know, if, it's up to you guys, not a whole lot of people know about this, yet, not a whole lot of people know about it yet. But it's going to come out, it's going to get exposed, maybe not in the Louisiana Review, they're, they're not, they don't seem to want to have a lot of, uh, input where that's concerned. But it's going to be exposed. You guys have an opportunity, I support you, it may not seem like it, I want you to do well, I want the administration to do well. I want you, I want to be proud of my board and my administration. But what has happened to me specifically, and anybody that's affiliated with me and the property owners around me over the last couple of months. Is, is terrible, I would hate for somebody else to have to go through. But it's more important than just that rezoning, it's going forward from here. Is that what we want? A county that, that you, that it's okay? Just because it's rules, because it's not illegal, it's okay to not follow the rules. Just because it's not illegal, it's okay to not follow the bylaws, just because it's not illegal, it's okay to not follow process. I didn't bring my kids up that way. I didn't talk to the youth group that's meeting at my house tonight and let them know about it, hopefully some of them are tuning in. I make mistakes, we all make, none of us are perfect. Admit your mistakes, admit the mistakes that the county administration has put you guys in and fix it. And then hold them accountable to advise you properly as we go forward. That's all I'm asking, it's really pretty simple, and at the same time, it would be difficult. Thank you.
Anyone else? I've seen no one else standing up in the room, but if anyone online, like, if you have a comment, please raise your hand on the computer. Unmute yourself. Nobody? Alrighty, I will now close the first round of public comments. Are there no public hearings? We will now move forward with action matters. A, compensation study and implementation costs, Mr. Dogs.
So, uh, members of the board, so we're bringing back to you the compensation study and implementation costs, it's all, you know, for those that may have not been, um. That we're not here previously at the previous meeting, I'll try and go through kind of the process of, of, of what we went through again for the compensation study. And talk about some of the revisions, um, that the board requested for some different implementation costs. So, just kind of going back, a little background, back in November twenty twenty-one, the board approved for staff to move forward with a comprehensive compensation and classification study. Again, it provides recommendations to ensure that county remains competitive in the marketplace. And can attract and retain the tal- talented workforce at market rates for the county. Um, and included an overall evaluation of county's current grade structure, salaries, um, salaries of relevant competitors, other, other localities, um, kind of around us. And it also recommends restructuring of the county's compensation structure based upon what, what the study came back with. Uh, Baker Tilly was and is the consultant selected to perform the compensation and classification study. Uh, the last, uh, comp and classification study was approved by the board and was, uh, done back in September third, two thousand eight, almost, almost fourteen, fifteen years ago. Um, so one, the compensation study itself, so one of the, uh, one of the components of the study was to pull data, data from public peer organizations to get a baseline. Um, so just looking at the attachments here, this just shows the list of those peer, of those peer organizations that were, um, that data was collected.
Yeah, I'm just curious, like, why would they use county like in right, or Hanover? To any idea to compare, I mean, isn't that notably different than?
A little bit, but when you think in proximity of where people locally, where they may or may not go to work, I mean, that's, you know, it's. Granted, it's a little bit larger organization, but if someone leaves from a small organization. Most times, they're necessarily not going to go to a smaller organization, they're going to potentially go to a larger organization, so that was just some of the. That was just some of the thinking with some of the comparative counties in, 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 in here. Um, so then through market survey results, uh, they average minimums, average midpoints, and average maximums were benchmarked. Um, and then the benchmark, uh, was achieved at the position match and number of compositions, and if it didn't have a number of comps. Um, that were, were comparable positions, then it was listed as insufficient, insufficient data. So looking at two, and like I said, I can scroll in, but we kind of talked about this before, this is kind of the, the average of the positions. Looking at average midpoints, um, average maximums, so on and so forth for all of the county's positions. The next piece was the market comparison, um, which compares Louisiana's current pay grades, pay grade midpoint, because they base it on our midpoint, and then they, they then took. Our results of our midpoint versus the results of all the cumulative midpoints altogether, and that's where they determined for each of the positions. Where those positions were above and beyond, were up, uh, in par, below, or, or, or over the current midpoint of those positions. So looking at attachment three, again, looking here for the each individual positions, looking here where our current midpoint is. Um, and then kind of looking at the average midpoints, ninety-five percent of market, hundred and five percent of market, and kind of where our midpoint is. In reference to the midpoint of, of all the data that was received. And again, that was kind of the basis then for, for then looking at the new pay grade and pay. Uh, in addition to the market comparison, Baker Tilly utilized, uh, which is called SAFE, which stands for systematic analysis and factor evaluation. Which is a point factor evaluation process, and it utilizes nine factors, and the factors are down below on the chart, education, experience, level of work. Physical demands, working conditions, human interaction, independence of actions, impact on the organization and supervision, uh, actions. Um, so then from the market, from the safe, uh, the market comparison. Uh, was your market comparison results provided the comparative data based upon market midpoints to create updated pay plans. Which is an attachment four, which was in the package. Um, so again, we compared where we were, we looked at where the, where the market results were, and then that, then that created the basis for our new grades. Um, at that point, showing us where our minimums are, which is basically the, which is the, the base for bringing someone in. The midpoint, which the midpoint is twenty-five percent above the minimum, and then the maximum, which is, um, fifty percent above the minimum. And you can see here, it says range spread fifty percent, and then midpoint differential, there's a, there's a five percent differential between every pay grade. So between using the market comparison, safe internal equity, and comparing our current pay grades, the title and pay grade assignments were created. Um, so that is attachment five, and again, this just shows where the county's current positions. Falls within those men's, mids, maximums, again, we're using what our market is and taking some of the other factors, and then they were placed on the new, uh, title and pay grade assignments. Uh, for both, uh, the general government and then the sheriff's office. Um, and then once positions were placed on the pay grade assignments, this formed the basis for the individual employees kind of determining. Were they above or below the new minimum of that, and again, from the implementation piece. We want to at least bring everyone up to the minimum of the new pay grade, and then the board, um, uh, we've got some additional options that we talked about previously for, for how do we bring them up above the minimum? Whether it's a percentage, whether it's based on years of service, years in the position, and we'll kind of go a little, little bit deeper into that. Um, so once it was determined where individual positions, employees were in reference to the pay grade assignments, this then formed the implementation scenario cost, which is option seven. And again, in what was provided for the implementation costs, those costs did not provide, that was just based upon salary, didn't include, you know. Obviously, if there's a increase in pay, there's going to be some increases because we have percentages for V R S, percentages like, uh, percentages for workers' comp, things like that. So what we did, we took Baker Tilly's costs and we used a standard twenty percent across the board for every one of their implementation cost scenarios, cost scenarios. We then plus that number up by twenty percent factor in those other costs that are associated with the increases. And as we discussed before, in the fiscal year twenty-three budget, the board approved, board approved three hundred and sixty-five thousand, um, to implement the, implement the comp study in some, in some fashion. So let me just kind of go back and again, I'll, I'll talk about the options, again, when we last met, there was five options, there was an option one and two. Um, uh, option one was just bringing everyone up to the minimum, which was, I think, I remember correctly, was about a. Uh, a nominal implementation cost, option two was a little bit more, and then option five was basically bringing everyone up to the pay grades and bringing them up in the same level. Um, of the pay bands that they are now, that one was about an eight hundred and seventy thousand dollar cost associated with that. So at the, at the last meeting, the board said, you know, bring us back some options, looking a little bit deeper at option three and option four and some variations. So just really quick and really quick and easy, option three is what the board saw before. And the total cost to implement, implement that was three hundred and twenty-five thousand, and again, that was employees with. All employee, the, the employees in, in the pay grades would move up to the minimum of the new grade. Plus, they would receive a three percent, so if, if they're moving up to the minimum, they're getting a three percent, let's just say that there are two thousand dollars above the minimum currently. Of where that new minimum is, they also get a three percent. So, so that's what that would show, and again, option three A, three B, and three C, it's exactly the same, it's based upon a percentage. So again, option three A is, is a three and a half percent, option three B is a four percent, and option three C is a five percent. So currently, out of what the board approved from a funding standpoint, option three and option three A, we could really fund that within the existing budget that the board approved. Again, the board approved three sixty-five. At three hundred and seventy-one thousand with personnel vacancies and some changes, that five thousand dollars, uh, differential. Would be able to be covered within, within the existing budget authority that's there, but if the board decided to do three B or three C, then there would need to be some additional funding for that. Um. So then going to option four, again, option four, the board saw last time. Option four is a cost of three hundred, a little over three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, and what that was, that would bring employees up to the minimum of their new pay grade. Plus, they would receive a half a percent for each year in their, in their current position, not years of service, but in their current position. Up to a maximum of what the new pay grade is, um, but again, this would not, um, there was no maximum on this, so if someone was with the county for a long time. Let's just say twenty years, they could get a, a ten percent increase, so at the last meeting, the board, the board. Wanted to, wanted to see some options of, you know, how do we do this with capping it maybe a little bit, and then seeing some variations, and they're either based upon. Years of service, just years of service period, or years in their current position. So options four, four A and four C are the same, basically, you bring employees up to the minimum. And then they receive a half a percent for each year in their current position, but it's capped at six percent. But they would receive a minimum of three percent, so again, if someone was here for two years, they're not going to get a one percent, they would get a three percent. So again, employees in this would get between the three to six percent increase, so that's four A, four C is identical, the only difference is it's a two percent instead of a three percent, so. Employees would be capped at six percent, but, but the employees in this would receive at least a two percent. So that's four A and four C, four B and four D are similar, but instead of being based upon half a year for each year in their current position. It was based upon each year of service period, so it's, you know, again, it has nothing to do with your position, it's been how long you worked here with the county. And there was some discussion at the last meeting, and, you know, and I also, uh, discussed this as well, as, you know, if you were in a position and you moved up to a. As you know, if you were in a position and you moved up to another position, you are going to get some type of increase from moving up to that new position. So so myself and our consultant speaker Tilly wasn't necessarily. Doesn't mean you can't do it for B or for D, but it wasn't necessarily necessarily fixing the compression piece of it necessarily. Because if you're moving to a new position, you got an increase. And then again, based upon where you are in that position, there's going to be, there would be some increase based upon there. So those are really the 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 new options for for the board to look at between option three and option four. I can, I've got a lot of charts that kind of show different examples for each one of these, but we can kind of get really deep in the weeds on that. Let me just kind of skip through some of this, the stuff that kind of gives the different examples from each scenario. Just a couple items to note as we discussed last time, so constitutional officers are not included in the pay grade assignments. But they are included in the implementation scenarios for this for the different options. Again, most surrounding localities, constitutional officers are not on the county's pay grade chart. And then also in January twenty seventeen, the board supervisors improved personnel policy two point eight point six. Which basically sets how the how those constitutional officers, when they take office, where they would come in on their salary. So. Until really the board changes that. Changes that policy, there's really not a good method to just plop them on pay grade assignments anyway, because it could be, it can be slightly. In conflict with the policy that the board approved, unless the board wanted to change that policy. And then in addition, the county administrator position has not been on the county's pay grade chart. In the last ten years that I've been here, I'm not sure if it ever has. And so so no costs are associated with my position in this in this implementation scenarios. So. I think maybe what I'll do, I'll go back to the options so I can get more questions from the board. And so between option three and options four, does the board have any specific questions? Yeah, so I did, I recommended option four A. And again, let me go back to here, I talked about an option three. And so under option four. The the options that would fit within the existing. Funding would be option four, option four A. And then option four C. If the board went with options four B or four D. Which is based upon years of service. Additional funding would be required. So so I recommend that option four A, it does a little bit of. A little bit of both of what what I was, what I recommended last time. It gets. Employees that have been here up to a minimum of three percent. But those that have been in the position that have have given service to the county for some time. It it allows them from a compression standpoint to get maybe higher up on the salary standpoint. But it caps at that six percent.
Yeah, what I said just before, my only issue with that, and I'm. Maybe not looking at it correctly. Is that when you do the current position, if you have somebody that takes that and that pay raise happens, talk about getting rid of compression. But to me, that compresses them with somebody they may have been competing for that job with. That has ten years of experience, just like they do, but they just want a promotion. And I brought up sheriff's office last time, I'll just, somewhere in the sheriff's office. Well, now they're sitting here and with that. Other person getting a half percent or whatever. They go up to just about even with them and they got less responsibility.
I, like I said, I didn't go through every single position, every single position, but but again, if you figure out that someone's going. From some position to a higher, a higher. Rank rank position, which which then equates to more responsibilities, higher pay. And again, with capping it at six percent. I think it's very unlikely that you're going to find anyone that would be making that's in 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 the lower position before, that's now making less than. Than that individual that's in the hotter position.
The salary, if you go back to the recommended salary chart, you said that essentially a five percent margin.
Yeah.
So when we talk about being the minimum pay grade, is that within the lower five percent of it or is it right in the middle of it? Right? So in other words, you said there's there's a five percent differential, right? Go back to it.
In between pay grades, there's there's five percent between every pay band.
But the minimum is the the beginning of that five percent differential.
Yes, I mean, so let me go back to, we'll go back to, so I think I understand.
That's the floor, that's the floor.
Yeah, oh. Yeah, so this one right here, and let me make it a little bit bigger so you can see. So yeah, right here, so the minimum, that is the floors. So again, if someone is currently below the floor, the minimum. They're going to be brought up to at least that minimum if they're below it. Now, if someone's been here for a while. Or depending on the position, if it's been vastly below market. We don't have a lot of circumstances where the positions are below the minimum that someone's been here for a while. So again. In this, everyone comes up to the minimum at least. And then there's some increase based upon that minimum, whether it's a flat percent for everyone or whether there's some differential of. Two to three to six or two to six or something like that. But again, remember when. From the county administrators authority, when when we bring someone on board, we're not, we're not always just bringing them in at the minimum, they're not coming in at the minimum. I've got latitude to go up to fifteen percent above the minimum. So again, the midpoint is twenty-five percent above the minimum. I've got latitude to go up to fifteen percent above that minimum when someone is hired. So again, we've used this all the time, we use fifteen percent, we use five percent for education, five percent for special skills. Special skills and then five percent for experience. So from HR standpoint, we've got a metrics that we use. If someone's been here for so many years above what the position really calls for. Most, most. Probably a majority of the time, someone's not just coming in, if they're if they're a new employee coming here, they're not starting off. Unless they have just absolutely no experience whatsoever for that position.
The the logic of the pay study is to figure out if we're underpaying people.
Compared with our competitors, which it shows that, yes.
And some people clearly fell into that range.
Yes.
And then you have experience that may maybe count even on this paper.
Well, let me back up. What it does first, it it compares our pay grades with pay grades above us. And so showing where our pay grades are, and then obviously we have positions that that land on those pay grades. So are we above or below those pay grades? Based and where those positions are. So that's the first piece of it, showing where our pay grades fall and where the positions fall. And then the second piece of it is the implementation piece. We have individual employees that are either. Below the minimum or they're above the minimum now. Of what the new pay pay rate is.
So if somebody is six percent above the minimum in their pay grade.
Right now.
Right.
Yeah.
Would they still get?
Yes.
Half percent up to.
Yes.
For years of service.
Yes.
You know, I brought this up last time, I mean, we had a budget season said we were going to give an eight percent salary increase in one of the past, right? Which is essentially what we're doing here, because we get a five percent salary increase. Now, we're saying, well, we'll give you up to at least three percent more. And not, and possibly even more than that, because we might move you into the minimum of your salary back. And you potentially could get up to six percent, depending on where you were, you might even be getting eleven or twelve percent raise on top of the five percent raise if you got.
It's it's potential and the only thing I would say about that is. Is okay, we haven't had a comp study done in quite some time and and have our positions been. Been below the market for for that long period of time. Well. If someone's maybe above six percent of the minimum, well, maybe they should be probably closer to twenty-five percent of the minimum if they've been here for some. Some length of service at this point.
And you said that you used the salaries, the five percent that we were given in your old number.
Yes, so again, the five percent. Yeah, so all employees, again. You got the five percent cola and so that brought the salaries up to the new position. And then even from that five percent, we still have people that are below the minimums now after that five percent. So that five percent just helped getting positions closer to where market is, but not all positions were at market.
And I understand that, I'm just saying, some people were paid properly, you know, within the the range of competitiveness. Some people were not, right?
Yes, but it's, but going back, maybe I'm misunderstanding the question, maybe if someone is above the minimum at this point. Again, if they've been here for a while, maybe being just six, and I don't mean to say it that way, but if if you're six percent. Above the minimum, but you had some length of service in the position here or just years of service period in the county, maybe you should be higher on that.
Right, right, right. But I'm sort of saying, okay, well. I'm, I, as I say, let's say I, you know, just pick a midpoint here. I'm employee A and I'm in the midpoint range. You know, and so let's just pick. It's kind of hard, let's make somebody in facilities just to make like, kind of see. Pretty normal there, okay, or you're in parks or rec if you want. So there's, there's almost an eighteen thousand dollar differential between. Min- minimum, the midpoint and the max.
Yep.
Right? And if I was just hired in a position that was being paid below, now I move up to the minimum, which is thirty-six thousand. And if I've been in the job for, you know, two years, I get a one percent increase. Or a minimum of three percent on top of that. Right? But if I'm already in the high end of the scale, say I'm getting paid the fifty-four thousand dollars, I'm going to get the three percent. On top of, you know, the five percent that I got last year. And to me, it just seems like we're not really solving compression, continuing to push some people outside of the range. Because we're giving an automatic raise. And I don't have anything, and I understand why it's unfair and I understand that problem, but you know, sometimes. It was equally unfair for the fact that that employee was being pulled, being paid below. The competitive wage and was brought in, I get there's fifty percent differential based on education, all those kinds of things. But if we automatically just say, well, because this person's getting a raise, you're going to get a raise, even though you're compensated at the highest. Right? Is that really good? Is that?
So to me, it goes to the question I asked in the last meeting, what was the goal in doing this study? And the goal was to find, are we competitive and what were the ranges that make us competitive? And to me, no matter what we vote for. Your point is clear that some are going to get an advantage from this, that. Only because the study was done, that has nothing to do with what we're competitive with. They're going to get an additional bump. That had, that was not the goal of the study, but. Is that accurate?
I mean, that's kind of the way I see it, yeah, I mean, that's.
Yeah, maybe, maybe, maybe I'm missing a little bit, maybe I'm not understanding the exact.
Well, i- if I'm, if I've been in, you know, if I'm at the high point of of my payback.
Yeah, if you if you're on the high point of your pay band right now, I mean, if if you've been, that means you've been in that position. Yeah.
So, so then maybe the question is, are you going out of your pay band, in which case you go to the minimum of the pay band?
Well, if, well, one, with all these, you cannot go above the maximum of the pay.
You can't.
No, you cannot. So that's, this this eliminates us and 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 quite frankly, there's only one position in the county. On this entire thing, that is above the maximum of the pay. Just one.
Okay, so that person gets no raise.
Correct. Correct, they would, with this, there would be nothing, there would be no increase.
So there could be somebody who's just three percent below the maximum of the pay band now.
It's potential, but but again, if they are, they're only going to get up to what the maximum goes to, up to the maximum of the page. And so then, so then what that does is if someone's been here for a while, well, I would hope that they are closer to the higher end. Of the pay band, if not, you know, then I'm not sure what the circumstances will prove.
So why are we giving, and 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 going back to your choices? And all of those, you're getting half a percent, but you were guaranteed that minimum would be a two percent increase.
Yeah.
So if you just, if you had just gotten promoted into your minimum area of payback. Four years of, or you wouldn't have a year's service.
Yeah.
You're still going to get three percent. Or two percent, even though the other person was at the minimum of that payback to start with and was already in there.
Correct.
And is now only going to get a two percent raise.
Yes, but if if you think if someone new comes on board, they're going to, if if you don't bring the current sat that we have up higher. Into the into the existing paving, if you bring new people on with the new pay bands, that's where the compression comes in. You're going to have people that are bumping right up to each other.
No perfect form.
So will you explain grades? How it's determined what grade. Sure, yeah, I mean, a- again, it goes back to market, it goes back to where those positions fell, the market midpoint. That's that's one of, that's one of the, probably one of the higher driving factors. And then also taken into consideration, one, what we talked about before, that safe score going back to. Going back to some of these factors. Yeah, right there. I mean, again, it took the market comparison, again, where where are we competitive and and what are our our neighbors? What's the averages of them, the safe score, looking at kind of internal equity within our pay grades. And and that was kind of, that was kind of the basis for for where positions fell on the pay grade assignment, but it was, it was. Heavily influenced by the by the mark, by the market, by the market.
Mister Doll, you are recommended for A. So you feel that for A. Hasn't that what we wanted to say, that we are competitive in the marketplace? That four A will attract people to Savannah to work. And because of the ladder and steps that we can retain and people in the town.
Yeah, and it also.
That's why, and I would figure that's why you get four A, of course, we may do four B. And they do the same thing, but those three things, if those three things are here, the two presented to us. Then then we have done what we asked that we needed to do.
Yeah, again, the the variations of four, you know, takes into consideration whether it's. Years of service in the position or or years of service, so so you can say. Yeah, and and then, you know, then the the four A to four C is just the the minimum of two or three percent. So to me, the the four. Looks at, looks at the compression piece a little more for those that have been here, had had some some additional years of service.
And that's the only part that I'll say. I like the years of service, I like.
I'm sorry, years of service and.
I mean, those two things, I like the years of service because, like I said, we want our folks to stay here, we wanted to move up through the scale and. I don't, well, I want them to know that they're appreciated if they move up.
I I think without years of service, I think years in current position. It's just something I could never see anybody doing in business. And again, somebody, to your point. Yeah, and I'm not even saying between all these options, I'm just. I I'm just saying, I would want to vote for one that is year of the service. Because if you have worked your butt off, there's three people in the department and you got a merit-based advance. And then suddenly, for you doing that, you set a goal to get to that next position. And suddenly, other people, whether it's equal or not to your pay, other people get a bump. And you didn't get a bump because you're, you know, you just, because you got a merit-based advance and for advancement. And I just don't. Yeah, but I've, I've, since I've been here, and again, I've been pretty close to the, pretty close to the, to the. Pay stuff between finance and county administration and HR. I I'm, I'm pretty sure that there has not been positions that have not received an increase when when they've gone to a new position.
You said they're our position.
I know, what I'm saying is, I can't, I can't imagine there's been someone that went up to a new position and they didn't get an increase. Yeah, I mean, I I can't imagine that's ever been.
No, no, and I get that, I'm saying they they got that bump based upon the. Their quality of service that got them there, both in position and pay. I think that is separate from. And I don't see where that should eliminate them from getting the same other bump that everybody else gets. There's two differences. This person, these two folks are even, this one goes up to here because they got a merit-based rating. But they've only been there for nine months.
Well, this one went up to, I mean, one, we don't. Well, this one went up to, I mean, one, we don't do merit. This one went up to here because they took on a new position.
I'm actually, I, I'm not saying it now, but they went to here.
Yeah.
So because they've been there for nine, ten, eleven months, they don't give anything for years of service. So this person down here that's been here the same amount of time, all of a sudden starts catching the press.
Whatever percentage that is.
Whatever percentage that is. I mean, they may have gotten a five percent for their, for getting to higher position. They may have gotten five. Well, all of a sudden, this person gets an additional three, now.
Yeah, but i- i- the years of service, and I think Mr. Doll probably. Say this is, that this is the case, there may be people that have been in that position for a long, long time. Now, they're going to be capped at six percent. Understand that, so that's fine, you're capped at six percent. You know, i- i- and you can't go higher than the maximum.
Correct.
Right. This doesn't actually say that.
It, it doesn't, but it's, it's, it's. Yeah, that's, that's what it is.
So you could be in a position where you've been in it, you know, ten years, you're, you know. Two percent or three percent away from the top, or, or that's it, that's the amount. And if you're at the top, you're not going to get it.
Correct.
Right. I mean, there's still going to be some people that win, some people that lose in, in whatever scenario that we pick. But it seems to me that the purpose of the study was to say that you are in this type of position. You were applying somewhere else for that position. Um, or you would be recruited for that position because we weren't competitive, and that's how our position you would have set to me. And that's the problem we're trying to solve. We're really not, I mean, we deal with raises in the budget process on a regular.
Well, one, it kind of goes back to, okay, so, so, so we're providing new pay grant, pay grades for where that position is for minimum and max, well. If someone's been here a while, they shouldn't be at the minimum. They should be with, with the colas and things that have taken place over the years, if they're in the same position. They should be somewhere closer to at least fifteen to probably twenty five percent, at least above the minimum. And so that's where some of the variations in, in the option four. Takes, spreads out the compression piece based upon the service a little bit.
Are you saying that you don't think that years of service should be in that?
Yeah, I, I think years in the current position is irrelevant thing to the problem I'm trying to solve.
Relevant for your.
Is irrelevant thing to the problem I'm trying to solve. This is the position that potentially, if I just, if I, if I am a. Accountant, mid-level accountant, and we's accounting is trying to hire. We're, we're competing against that. We don't want that person to lose the cap, right? We give people raises, you know, in the regular budget cycle, and we're not trying necessarily to give a person a higher raise. You know, uh, uh, just because, well, we did a compensation study, and the compensation study said, well, this is it, and we want treat others to be as equal as possible. I understand that, but it's, it's, as you put it earlier, what's the intent of the, of the salary study? It's to make sure that we're competitive for those positions. And, and in my opinion, you know, uh. That if, if you've been in that position and, and, you know, you've moved up to it, and you're. You're being rewarded for your expertise. I personally would do three percent. I'm in favor of four C and the two percent. Because again, I think that we gave a very generous raise last year, uh, or if we gave this budget cycle a five percent. And I, I, I think, I understand why we're doing it, but there are still going to be some people that won't get a raise potentially. Regardless of what we do. So there's still going to be somebody who is going to feel the struggle because just the way that the chips fell in their particular situation. But they really shouldn't feel this. If that's the case, they're at the high of their, of their pay range in that particular position. They've been with the, uh, the county for X number of years, uh, they're near the maximum of their, of their place. Either they have the skill set to move into another position, or they're being very well paid for the position that they're, that's kind of the way I look at it.
Yeah, and, and again, I, I did the three percent, then again, going back to previously, because again. The options, we had limited options, a little more limited options last time. I, I went to the three percent because I was trying to get all staff at least. To a break even of, of inflation from the past twelve months. That's why I, I did, that's why I recommended four A.
Yeah, I guess the last thing I'd say of this is, is, is as an employer. You know, when you look to hire somebody for that position, you're factoring in years of service to begin with, right? How many years of experience do they have? So you're factoring that in the beginning. So the question you would say is. If I have somebody who, you know, has, has been, you know, uh, uh, with, in this position for a while. And say that they're at the mid level, and now essentially I can give them a six percent payment at the top level. Would that automatically be somebody that was as competitive as somebody gradually coming into that position at the same level as yours? Would you hire them to that level? Maybe, maybe not. Maybe you'd be hiring them to, you know, more in the, more in the medium than the higher level, because you don't have that personal experience with that.
Yeah, well, again, I, I, I only have fifteen percent, so that's, that, that's where my limit is. I mean, anything above that, the board would have to approve, so.
I've got one more from Eric Paris, and then this one may be off the wall, but I'm going to make it. What's the big thing that we just did for the school system to? Try and even that.
They did the, um.
Or the school system did. Get rid of A and B.
Yeah.
The other thing that I've heard a lot of complaining about over the years is when, while A and B were in place. If we hired, let's say I was teaching in Louise and I moved to Savannah with thirty four years of experience. They wouldn't hire me at thirty four years of experience. They'd only, they, they capped it out at like twelve.
You said Savannah does?
That's what they did. They don't do that anymore because it's now corrected. That was one of the things that they did. I think it's either twelve or fifteen. That they capped it out. That created the fact. To me, that's kind of like this when you do the years in that position.
Yeah, the only difference is, they also have steps in place, two automatic steps.
I'm just telling you after this, just. Going back to the, the years in current position was. Years of experience.
Yeah, I mean, it's, again, some of this would be fixed potentially if the county had steps, because that means every year you're going to see some type of increase. Some years, you know, the county saw, maybe didn't see an increase, maybe it was a one percent, which didn't keep up with, with what the cost of inflation was, so. But yeah, there's, I mean, the.
That's back to when they had the great language of a two percent average.
Yeah.
For the teachers, so, you know, if you were at the top, you got one, one.
So again, it's just the option. The option threes are just straight across the board percentages.
The, any other question? So I think we'll all look at, uh, uh, less technical question. The, are all the numbers that we got, are they straight from? Uh, Baker Tilly, meaning, are, are they? Are the numbers we're looking at in the spreadsheet, what Baker Tilly sent and said, here's.
Yeah, the market, the market midpoints, that was Baker Tilly going out and getting data from getting the pay grades from all those we got.
So, so we, we haven't adjusted any of that data since getting to the four. That Savannah, there, we, we haven't massaged any numbers in the four.
No, no, they're, they're numbered. Well, that's like going back to.
Are you talking about like the increases?
No, I'm just saying in that spreadsheet, you haven't looked at any numbers and said, well, we'd like to. Uh, before staff brought to us, there, this is not accurate to where we are, are at or anything. These are all.
No, this right here, this is their data. This is the, the average midpoints and stuff. That's their data that they pulled from those organizations.
Okay.
Who was on this committee to choose, um, for, um, A?
Four A, I mean, that's basically my recommendation and Ms. Miss Love, Miss Snow.
Okay.
Yeah, did you have anything else you want to add? You don't want, hadn't gotten to speak up.
All right, oh, so I, I. One, I think we need to stick to what the plan was. Uh, the reason for doing this in the first place, if there's other adjustments that we feel that need to be made and. Trying to accommodate other aspects of pay, then we should do that in next year's budget. But the, the budget that we put out for this had a purpose that I do, I think we need to accomplish that purpose. And I think we need to do it in the budget that we allotted. Um, there's always next year, this is not a, it, again, if we want to do some sort of other raises or something. But to me, we need to stick to what the goals were when we create them.
And we said three seventy-five, right?
Three sixty-five. But, but again, if you go to option four A, which is about five, six thousand above, up to three sixty-five, and then three A. Which is, you know, six thousand above.
Even if we went to five, three C, I mean.
If you were to three.
Just, I mean, I, I just don't, I don't understand the purpose of that. And again, if we did three C, we would have said. Hey, let's give it ten percent raise. I mean, even though inflation is this, I can assure you that most private employers aren't saying, hey, inflation is a certain way in your salary. You know, they're just not doing it. I mean, you know, it's, it's, it's part that affects everybody, affects the business owner, affects that from that standpoint. And we are in the, in the position to do this because we have the power at first. But, but, you know, really, if we're sticking with Chris's point. Then the thing that is closest to what we originally said we were going to do is really, you know, option four. Period. No, you know, no caps, that's it, that's it. Option four, no guarantees. And that's the purest one to that.
Let me also say that if, if we, uh, try to find the wording that you use for. Uh, regarding va- vacancy savings, yeah. Whatever increases we give, of course, will be, um, that's going to bump whoever for the duration that they're here. Uh, vacancy savings is a short, is a one-time thing, and so if we say, well, we had some extra money because of those vacancies. Those vacancies are going to get filled, and, and that pay, that pay bump they'll experience next year, and the next year, and the next year.
Yeah, but I, I guess what I'm trying to say is there's always, there's always a, a kind of an ebb and flow with hiring people. Whether between hiring people, again, the board approved funding to the five percent. I, I need to go back and see, so between some vacancy savings and what the board approved for five percent. That five to six thousand differential. Is, is not going to be an issue to cover that within the existing budget, I guess is what I'm trying to.
I, I agree with you. So if that's, we'll say if it's true, but if it's true, you're always going to have some force in that. Then that almost says that we should put it in the budget that we, that we're actually not going to spend all the money for salaries that we budget. Because we're going to have some vacancies, which in essence would lower the, the spend on.
Yeah, you could, but then, I mean, if by chance, a potential year where you have everyone's fully staff, then you're, they need to shorten.
So in this case, if we do this, and you have, you're aware everybody is fully staffed, then we won't get that relief of that. Where we didn't have it, and these people will have got.
Yeah, but if you go to the next year, I'm, I, I am certain that there is going to be a point where there's someone that is at the point where maybe they retire. And then someone else comes in the position below them, and they're coming in a lesser amount than what that person retired. Well, so there's, there's good, I mean, i- if we're just talking the five, five to six thousand differential, I think that's easily covered.
I think it's covered. I, I understand it's covered, but it's perpetual.
Oh, no, no, I, I, yeah, I, I would, I agree, the amount is, is, is there, but.
I, I, I don't know, yeah, it's good conversation. I, I. Again, I think we need to stick to what the purpose was of the study. Um, not use the vacancy differential. And come into the budget range that we told the public. Uh, we were going to spend, and I'm going to use a term that sounds negative, and I don't mean it in any way. I admire the, the care. But to go above what we stated. Or other reasons of, oh, just think it's, it'd be good to get more or something is a bit opportunist. Uh, when it's not what we put in the budget and told the public we're going to do.
I don't think the, what are you to say, six to seven thousand dollar difference?
Yes.
Is that much of a difference?
To, to, to Mister Fairchild's point, I mean, again, I, I put forward an option that I thought was within the budget. And, and I understand that's five to six thousand from a number above, but that's why I didn't put forward something that was five hundred thousand. Because that's board decision. I'm working within the means of the budget of what, what the board adopted, and I am very confident that. Those numbers, I, I understand your point, is going to fit within that budget. And the board dropped it.
Well, I think you came back to us and said, I think we can do it for less.
Yeah.
Well, no, the board dropped it. We're trying to balance the budget by thirty five thousand.
If, if, if we were not in an inflationary cycle, would we be putting?
I'm sorry.
If we were not, if we were not, if we were not reporting inflation numbers, and say we're eight or nine percent inflation, would you have even put in two or three percent?
Maybe not. Like I said, I, I, maybe not. I mean, certainly, you know, the goal of a cola. Is to offset what, what the cost of inflation is and what the cost of increases are to keep, to keep employees whole, so. In a year like this, and then, you know, the board's been very generous, generous staff, um, in, in, in the calls the last couple of years. But there were some years that, that the county was, was definitely behind the mark. And so, so one, when you're looking at, we haven't done a co- a, a true, um, compensation study. In, in quite some time, and then there were some years that the county was, was below what, what a call it should be. I think that what's being presented is, I think is in line for, for the employees we have. And you know, the one thing I can say is, it is, it costs far more by people leaving and going elsewhere and the turn. And, 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 and the wear and tear that it takes on other people to bring new people on board, and.
As an employer, I completely get.
It's, it, it, it is, it is, it is the worst thing in the world, and we have fantastic employees here, and. And again, and, and I'm, what I presented was what I consider to be within the book.
And, and I say, if, if, if we're not doing those things you said well enough, then that suggests it. In next year's budget, and I understand that there's, that would be the one word, but there's some touch factor to what you're saying. You're, to some people, they're coming to, um, and sometimes you'll have people not in that position, so it adds a, a little, again, fat and fluff. But, but then I, I go to, again, if that's, if that's always going to be, so should we always consider that in the budget? I understand that potentially make things tighter, make us miss it. And, um. Yes, in the grand scheme of the budget, we'll, we'll meet the budget, the overall budget, that as a line item. Will go over and I'm just not sure that I see the reason to, what's, yes, what's. Something more than what our original goal was.
Well, well, let, let me just make one more comment, and then I'll, then I'll, I'll kind of leave it with, with, with whether this is over or not, you know, again, some of the data. Some of the people that are in the market study for the implementation costs, again, things are changing, you know. And so we're not updating the thing periodically, so there may be some positions in there right now that have changed since there. I mean, I, not a lot, have you? I mean, so again, going back to that differential. I think it's within the budget. I, I understand from, from a, from a number standpoint, it, it is not, but I think. At the end of the day, when we implement it, it's probably going to be closer to that three sixty-five.
Anyone else? I, I'm just going to say, just two really short, quick things. Um. Nobody's trying to take advantage of anything. I just, I don't like the years of service in your current position. That's the only language versus years of service. Um, that's. That to me is the difference, that part. The other part is, that's how we build our. Um, money is left over. You know, when you had, yeah, fund balance, that's how we build our fund balance. Each year is, we allot all those things, and there. We know that there's going to be money left over because people are going to leave, but it's just like building the, uh, putting in the percentages for the. The local taxes that are going to be collected, thanks to that, and actually, that people, we don't want to be all, not too much, but we've done our budget.
Yeah, so this will take away from that if we go over.
Years of service, years of, the, the years of service is going to not, um, address. I mean, it's going to, it's going to make compression worse. That's basically what.
As compared to years of current position.
That's the bottom line, that's the way it's going to do, so. Uh, you know, and then, and then we, then we'll have a discussion two years from now about compression. I, I know, I know, we will. Again, what's the original purpose was to create a reset so that we were competitive in here. That was the original purpose. We can argue this to death.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. Can we have anybody who wants to make a motion?
Let me go to, so we got. So we have two things. One, this, this motion is one, first approving the pay plan for general government and law enforcement. And the title and grade assignments for general government and law enforcement. This is that, this is motion one, saying these are the things we're approving these, and then. Motion two is what option we want to go with.
We have motion one.
I, I move the board to supervise the food and select implementation scenarios. Is that right?
Scenario.
Scenario.
Scenario for A. For general government and law enforcement.
And three, four, which.
Yep.
Okay, four A is. Or a three hundred.
Hope some sort of apologize. Sorry.
Uh, for a three hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and ninety-six dollars total cost with salary and benefit. Do I need to read?
Yes, probably read under.
I, employees should move to the minimum of their new pay grade. Plus receive five percent of.
Eight percent.
I have five, point five percent, but each year in that current position. Half at six percent or a minimum of three.
Not to see the maximum.
Yes.
Total cost with salary and benefit.
Do I need to read?
Yes, probably read under.
I, employees should move to the minimum of their new pay grade. Plus receive five percent of.
Eight percent.
I have five, point five percent, but each year in that current position. Half at six percent or a minimum of three.
Not to see the maximum.
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Booker, second by Mr. Seager. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That one will be. Well, I will say aye to this one. Motion passes three to.
Sorry, one more motion. And, and yeah, their motion, oh, sorry, motion three's out here. We don't need motion three because it's, it's four, four A was within, within the budget.
Right, that was if we did four B or something involved, then we'd have to add one. All right, I, I just wanna say, I think vetting that really is a good gun. Going through that process and has a good conversation. Um, I will add one last thing. This is going back and it's out of order and I apologize for getting out of order. But you were talking about the deputies.
Yep.
My brother-in-law graduated from here, I don't know when, but he lived down in South Paulson. And they wanted news in South Paulson. He was tech, that's why I looked.
Yeah, we got, we, we got, um, we got an email from, from, uh, one of our insurance people, but they're down in the rural area and they saw. They saw two, um, and then, and just making sure that everyone was doing well.
That's why we have the officers.
Yeah.
No, it was, it was on the news.
Yeah, same, the news that we, yeah, about the phone.
The news is outreach.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Um, B. Clerk. Oh my goodness, clerk of the circuit courts, office certification, thank you. Ms. Redwood.
Thank you all for allowing me to come and present this item to you. So in a court of law. The judge will say when, um, someone objects to a witness's testimony to, if, if it sustains the objection, to disregard all the. Prior testimonies. I'm asking you all to disregard everything that you all just talked about and look at this item. And it is, and not based on what you just decided. So. It's kind of a complicated matter, but I'm trying to simplify it. Um, so essentially, there is a certification program for every constitutional officer. We each have our own certification program. Um, they differ. It's in some variation of what, I can't tell you how they exactly compare. Um, I don't know what the clerks is. So my deputy clerks, um, have been, since I became clerk since two thousand sixteen, they have been enrolled in the. Um, circuit court clerk master certification program. In two thousand and eighteen, I became a certified clerk, um, as well as a, um. Certified master, um. Clerk administrator, manager, actually. And in two thousand twenty, all of my deputy clerks became certified, um, through, not only through the Virginia Court Clerks Association, but also through the. Compensation Department. These plans, as many of, some of you may be aware, are, um. They, the comp board is with the general assembly and some of the plans are funded, some are fully funded, some are not fully funded. So you may be certified, um, through their program, but not receiving the funding or the pay increase that goes with that certification. Um, so in two thousand twenty, my, uh, all of my staff, all seven of them became certified master deputy clerks. Um, at that time, they, their positions, um, in the queue for money, um, was not funded. So they've been certified since two thousand twenty, but they, the nine, it's a nine point three percent pay increase from the comp. That has not been funded for two years. Um, so because I was certified. And I think I've said this to you all before, because I was certified and our, the clerk's, um, certification program was separate. My position was funded, so I have been taking my certification pay and dividing amongst all seven. Of my deputy clerks, so that they were receiving something, um, for their certification. I didn't come to the board in two thousand twenty and ask you to fund all of my positions because they weren't giving the funding. I simply waited until the comp board funded those, um, positions. Only four deputy clerk's positions in my office are comp board employees. There are three that the county funds those positions. Um, and that is from many years ago. There have been seven deputy clerks in that office for. Quite honestly, it's probably been the late nineties, early two thousands. Um, Mr. Peterson came in with workload studies and all of that, and the board through the year solved it to allow. Deputy clerk, more deputy clerks in the office. And so we have a total of seven, and all seven of those, I can tell you are necessary employees. To run that office. Um, however, because those three are county employees. In June, the general assembly approved additional funding to the comp board and we received. My deputy clerk moved up into the queue to where those four who were unfunded through the comp board are now receiving their nine point three percent. Pay increase as of July.
Based upon their comp board, on their comp board funded salaries.
Based on their comp board funded salaries, they are, um, they are receiving the nine point three percent. That leaves three in my office. That don't receive that comp board, or that pay increase and will never receive that pay increase, even though they are certified. And have gone through the same education and programs. And continue, because it's a continuing program, you can't just slack off and not do your continuing legal education, basically. Uh, they will never receive it unless the county funds that, because those are county funded positions. And so I'm before you tonight, asking you to fund the nine point three percent pay increase based on. And I'm basing it on, not on their current county paid salaries. But based on the lowest paid salary of my co- of my lowest comp board employee. So it's approximately, uh, two thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars for each employee, each of those three employees. Um, so a total of eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars that I would be asking the board to approve. Um, for those individuals who are, as I said, same education. Um, maybe not the same years of experience, because that's how they become comp board employees. My, my. Four who were in there, that will have been there the longest, those are comp board employees, and that people have left, people have moved up into those positions. Um, but that's, but, um, as long as everyone stays, and I've never, I don't have any turnover in the office. Haven't had any turnover since twenty sixteen when I became clerk. One person left right after I became clerk, and I've had no turnover. And the required education, um, for these individuals to do their jobs is. It, it's immense. Um, and I provided in your packet or in my, um. My report, just to give you an idea of, you know, there are a hundred and twenty clerk's offices in the state. Out of those hundred and twenty, oh, thirty-three clerks are master clerks. Um, why, why wouldn't they become clerk, master clerks? There are multiple reasons. Because why wouldn't you when you're gonna automatically get a nine point three percent pay increase? That, that's, that would be idiotic to not accept that. And there's multiple reasons. One, because they don't have good audits, and that's a requirement for you. Um, when you become a master clerk or master deputy clerk, whose your office, you have to have good audits. Um, with minimal, um, management points is what they call them. Um, I, since I became clerk, I have had a good audit the entire time. I've not had one management point against me. Um, I'm sure you all saw on the news recently that that's not the case for, uh, many clerk's offices, especially one in our circuit. Um, so my office, you know, we, and I don't take the credit for it. It's, it's my staff. I mean, they do a phenomenal job. Out of, of approximately twelve hundred and eighty-three deputy clerks, circuit court deputy clerks in the state, there are only two hundred and eighteen. That are master deputy clerks. Why? I mean, why wouldn't you put in for your individuals to get an automatic nine point three percent pay increase? And those are individuals that are certified, not just funded. So I'm not presenting you the numbers of just funded people. This is the individuals that are, um. That are actually certified. And roughly out of a hundred and twenty clerk's offices, there are only five in the state that are fully certified. Every staff that was being certified. Little old Flugan County is one of them. And that's something to be proud of.
Yeah.
Um, so, yeah, you know, I. I, I stand here before you, asking you to be consistent with the pay in my office. The other individuals, four individuals receive their nine point three, and I ask that my other, um, deputies that are non-comp board employees. Receive the nine point three pay increase. They have to work for it. If they don't continue to earn it, then, then that money goes away. Um, so. I know that. And I, and I, Eric and I have had a conversation about this. I know that the, um, Eric is not on board, Ms. Fall. Is not on board with this because he is concerned about setting a precedent. This is approved for my office, that it may be approved for other offices. The other offices are gonna come in on the tail end of this. I will present to you this, you've already set a precedent. You've done it for sheriff's office. The sheriff's office has a ma- master deputy. Put, at, um, course, just like the clerk's office, just like the commissioner of revenue, and just like. On the treasurer's office. Treasurer's office, my understanding, doesn't participate in their career development program. Um, but the sheriff's office does, and they have multiple. Master deputies that are paid by comp board, and they have two, I think maybe it's up to three now that our county paid deputies. That the county has approved their master deputy pay. So if you're worried about setting a precedent, that precedent's already been set. I mean, it's in the, it's actually in the learn and earn. Um, part of the personality ankle. That the deputy sheriffs, there's a master deputy pay and it's to be determined. And so it's already been set. And so I'm just asking you to come, I'm coming before you, asking you to be consistent, not just amongst my employees. For those three employees who have earned it, but also amongst all employees. Um, who have certification programs. And I understand that not all offices have that. I can't help that. Um, just like, you know, I can't help. What salaries certain people in the county make and what others. I mean, you know, there are things that, that are beyond me. So I just ask you, and I'm here to answer the questions that you have. Um, explaining because it is complicated, um, but. I, I simply ask you to please approve the nine point three percent pay increase, which, like I said, is roughly. Um, eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars. Now. I will explain also that, um. As of August one, that's a Monday, the comp board also approved a one thousand two hundred and fifty dollar pay. Increase for all comp board funded positions. So that includes me and four deputy clerks, twelve hundred and fifty dollars. To our salaries. That is not, I'm not asking for that to be a pass through to me and four deputy clerks. That comes to account, you all are getting that six thousand.
So six thousand.
Uh, yeah, I forget what the exact figure is. Um, six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So really, the offset of what I'm asking you to fund, you're getting an extra sixty-two fifty. I'm asking you to simply give us two thousand seven hundred and thirty-two dollars. To fund those free positions, because you're already going to get to offset the eight thousand dollars, you're gonna get sixty-two fifty of it back. So. And that's, that's what I'm asking you to do.
What is the process to be certified?
Um, it is a, it is a long process. Uh, I mean, there's a, a bull figure is along with it, with all the requirements. You have to have to first become certified. There's also recertification, but first become certified. Your clerk has to be certified in your office, has to have had three consecutive good audits with no management. Um, you also have, there are classes that you are continuing. I call it legal education, that's what we call it, attorneys, but it's, it's the same concept. You have continuing learning. That you have to, um, do. And I believe, if I'm not mistaken, when I last looked at it. Um, it was sixty credit hours of, um, learning to become certified. But there's a long list of, you know. Personnel, you have a positive personnel reviews, you have to have. Um, the clerk has to be certified. It's, it's a really long process, um, that you have to go through. And then it's submitted to the Virginia Court Clerks Association, and also in submitted to the, uh, Virginia Compensation Board. Um, so it's, it's pretty extensive.
That, that sixty, sixty-two fifty, I think. Why would that stay with the county? I, I, I thought that it's intended for the county, it would just be a pass through.
It was for an increase. It was an increase for the clerk's office for them to get paid, but. Through what the board approved in the five percent plus what they just approved this evening, they're getting more than. Than what the twelve fifty equates.
So let me explain what that twelve fifty is. District court clerks, deputy clerks, make more than that. They're state paid. And so it's been. Huge on the Virginia Court Clerks Association's agenda, to lobby the general assembly. So why would circuit court deputy clerks not make what district court clerks make? With everything that our offices do. Why would they not make? And so that twelve hundred and fifty dollars was to try to offset. Okay, we need to bring these deputy clerks up in pay so that they somewhat are. With district court clerks. And so that's what the twelve hundred and fifty dollars is for. Um, but it, it's, the county is reimbursed, um, from the compensation board for the salaries of. Five employees, including myself in the office, um, minus supplements that, um, you all allow. Um, and so that twelve hundred and fifty dollars is just part of that region. I mean, I haven't come and asked for that to come through directly to us because I don't. I feel like you supplement us, you're very good to us. I'm not asking for that twelve hundred and fifty dollars to be passed through.
Mr. Fall, what was your objection?
You know, I mean, one, i- it, it just kind of goes back to. If you do this. There will be other offices coming right behind, and it just sets a precedent that. If there's any type of certification program that, that. Constitutional offices are, are eligible for, but other non-constit- constitutional offices are not eligible for. They are then eligible to get some increase because, because one or two employees, or however many employees in that office is eligible for state bump. Um, I, I know, for instance, just as, uh, Mr. Redwood said. I know the commissioner's office have been doing this similar thing like this for his staff. And so, so if you approve this, I mean. Um, this, this will be coming through some other offices, just.
But how is it different then, when state? You know, says, okay, we're gonna get this class of people to raise, and then something kind of give the other people to raise. How is it different from when the state basically says, these are state, state, um. Uh, what do we call it? Where, where they say, okay, we're gonna give. This class of employees are raised, and then the rest is left up to us to provide a raise to match with them.
Yeah, so, so the board generally, if, if there's a. If there's been, let's just say, for instance, if, if the comp board provides five percent. For comp board funded positions only, then the board has provided the five percent for the other non-comp board funded positions in that office. And other county employees as well.
But we're not, but that's not happening in this case because. But we're not, but that's not happening in this case because. So I've never ever employed who are comp board funded, are getting that, ones who are not comp board funded, are not getting it. So how's that different?
Because it's only eligible for one office or it's only, it's only eligible for five offices.
But I, I mean, isn't, isn't the general policy that we've done is to try to make sure that. If the comp board is funding a class of people differently, that the county itself is then trying to treat all those employees equally.
If they're in the same office.
If they're in the same office, um. I guess the board, the board, yes, the way, so if you're talking, yes, when for the hazard pay. Going back, the board did it for the sheriff's office and there is non-comp board funded employees that the board. Then, then did fund for those non-comp board funded employees. Yes. So from that regard, yes, you did.
And we don't set the salary for schools separately. We have to provide the money. From that, that's the number that you give up.
So. What Trissy said about the sheriff's office and that already being a precedent. Um. Do you agree? Cause when, when we talked today, we were saying, you're saying this is going to be the first and it could create a flow.
Yeah. I mean, honestly, I, I guess that one I didn't, uh, that was maybe not on my radar, but that was on.
Let me ask you this. As he said. We're talking about three employees here. I imagine probably three employees in your treasurer's office. Target, probably, probably. Well, that's, that's their choice. But in the commissioner's office, I think there's two that are not funded. We're talking about, I think, I think it's one or just one. Just one?
There's one. But being authorized.
All right. Please come to the, please come to the microphone for just a second. Yeah, because we, we need to be able to hear this.
Totally. Everything is very interesting. And I'm one of those officers that's been participating since two thousand and four. Uh, we've been fully certified most of my time since about two thousand and seven. We have a little person turnover and we're in the process of having one person. Complete a training about thirteen months and we're a hundred percent too. This tread weight, you know, took the initiative when she first selected. It, it got everybody on the comp board funded and I, there are, there's one other category of comp board funded people. The comp board authorizes the positions. Uh, I have four authorized positions, but the general assembly doesn't give them enough money to pay for all of those positions. So three of mine are funded positions. And one of them is not funded, but it's authorized. I don't have any county funded positions. So there's totally kind of three of there. Authorized, authorized and funded and then county. And in fact, the funding from the comp board, every load based on what the general assembly could give them for revenue every year. So even though we have authorized positions that are funded, like. Oh, Trissy, not a chief deputy, it's funded at, you know, fifty-one thousand minimum for the, uh. Chief deputy in our office.
I mean, interrupt, but I don't, that's where the comp board, I don't have a chief deputy. I've been since the chief.
Which is also at fifty-one thousand and sixty. This works clear. My point being. Because they don't have enough money to fully fund those positions, they give us a reduced amount that's revenue to pass through to y'all. And thank God the board supplements us to a higher salary, county proof. So like my chief deputy, sixteen thousand four hundred and fifty dollars. That's what they give us from the comp board. So what does she get for this career development? Nine point three percent of sixteen thousand dollars. Not her actual salary that y'all can get. So the only thing you do is you can be a hundred percent sure. That after y'all do whatever y'all do, so Mr. Tredway, I will be on your dock and on your table. Uh, to find, to follow me. I hope you do. I wish we got, because these hard programs, I pitched it to you many times. It's a three-year process that you have to re-certify every year. Not, it's not free and done. It's every year. But we feel it's strong, it's, it's such a good program that the compensation board authorize it. Weekly, like it's important to our staff and so we don't encourage them, we require them to do it, you know? And it helps us, the veteran employees. But the problem is that. Like my one person who was unfunded. I don't get any money for her at some comp board, so nine point three percent her salary still nothing. Uh, but if I look at what they authorize, and that's what Trissy's done, the thirty-two, eight seventy. That's what I would give to my, uh, deputy two positions unfunded but authorized. I, I, again, so it's a conflict. I'm sorry, I just is. And we want to be consistent. So what we've both done is taken the money and then the fifty, I can try to spread it out. All men and staff for the certified people. So my deputy two is, will get certified and, uh, you know, it's about totally turning in. Then I'm going to have to come over, probably a thousand and dollars, that important, I get personally on the shoulder of someone for her. And that's what Trissy's asking, would you consider doing it for her staff, that the comp board doesn't give her anything for even though they're certified?
How does the comp board decide that Fluvia County needs three certified people in y'all? Well, I don't. And they pay for that, but then we have six. So.
I, well, I, Mr. Tredway said that the comp board gives her four people, but for, for, Mr. Peterson said. Absolutely had to have more folks.
Mm-hmm.
And the board of supervisors supported him, I remember, specifically.
Okay.
I'd date the woman involved, one related by phone. We gave them additional staff, like the treasurer's has four.
Right.
She had, ten years ago, she needed one more, but she got one more. She got one unfunded position. Uh, and so that's how it happens. The comp board said. This is how many we are prepared to say you all. But they may not even fund them like me, that I want it's not funded at all. So it's complicated.
I had a similar question, Trissy, last week. And I, I think your response was in part, the study. The study, the last study was old.
Uh, yeah, I mean, there are, there's a study for the clerk's office is older than the salary study that you guys, I mean, I think. I think the salary study, Fluvia was maybe fourteen years old. The working group study for, um, the comp board on the clerk's office is older than that. And let me just give you an idea of the comp, when we have to enter our data to comp board, it's on a black screen with green writing. That's how old DOS, like that is the system that they, I want y'all all to know that. So it, it's absolutely ridiculous. And so he's right. I mean, they give a pot of money and then they say, okay, well, we're going to give Fluvia this amount. We're going to just divide it amongst these people and then give them whatever, 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 pay their, their titles.
It's just like the sheriff's office. I mean, you, you got twenty-three and you gotta have, there's some way can we, deputy could cover our town.
We know this is important to our staff. We need to establish excellent training and make some better staff members. And because the comp board is, they're not bad people, they only have what the general assembly gives them anyways, plus to divide up. Trissy and invite, and may I, anybody sent you before we get home, I'll call you and say, Henry, you gotta do this.
You know, that's the only thing now, excuse me, for, uh, interrupting you.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I know you've been before, before, and why should you all have to come before us? Why don't we have a policy or an understanding? That you have three people in the comp board, phase three, and you need two others. And they've gone through the same process. That that should be an automatic. Why do we, why do? We've had to.
Cause they don't have the money. That's always the county funded level, that's what we intend. But the comp board only funds, I'm going to give, commit some ways people aren't funded. At the, the salary that they authorize, they only allocated less per individual. I get sixteen for my chief deputy, I get about seventeen, and it's really inverted. I get. Less money for the most qualified person in my office because of the way the comp board has come. Sorry, but that's where my deputy three gets more money than my deputy four and my deputy. Four gets more money than chief deputy. I think she's, she's got excellent point. We'd like to reward these people who go through all the county certifications, but we need girls in, it's that simple. And if y'all could find a way to do the nine point three percent. For each member that we have certified. Then, then that would be consistent. The comp board will never get there because the general assembly won't give them enough money to get there. They get closer, but it's still short.
We pay sixty, sixty-four percent of it. We pay sixty-four percent of the education, but they talk about less of kids, I mean.
I support what she's saying, but I hope we will apply to the equipment. Because, you know, they're the ones that keep our office as close as they bust their butt to do this training.
And they come off attorney's office. The only one we haven't talked about, attorney's office, if they have them. Even, even then, we're only talking one or two. That were unfunded by the comp board.
We have from the common, I mean, I don't know if they are eligible for career development. That's called career prosecution. Career prosecutor and, and it's.
In the area, do they have the same, the same situation?
We have same programs.
They have the same opportunities. Um, and some of them do not participate. And I don't mean to call out another member of, you know, Green County, for example, just on the news. They are eligible to do this, but they don't have their audits, so they would not be actually. They can't do it. I mean, so that's a problem with some of the area.
You said it, there's five that are fully present, right?
But not every, look at it, in this matter, like, you guys really pushed the envelope to have our people be. Certified, master deputies and choppers and, and, um. Some of them, we can take their hour of career development to, to, you know, make sure they got something. Nine point three percent, even the minimum salary for the positions authorized and they're very clear, they're statuteary. A minimum salary, thirty-two, eight seventy. Isn't what the comp board gives us because they don't have the money. They give us the allocate's left, but nine point three percent of that would. Would really, uh, solidify their stroke and it might encourage other people to, I mean, to.
But when I first talked to Trissy about this, I. As it sounds like everybody else is, I saw the merit in this. And then the concern today of. Okay, if we do this, it is going to have some weight behind it that if we do it for one, we gotta do it for all. And, and maybe that's okay. Cause it sounds like maybe this is a piece that's been missing for all. And, and Trissy bringing it up was just the one piece that did that. I, I would say, I would ask, though. Why not ha- have brought this up, uh, when you're doing the budget instead of now?
Because, well, for me, I was waiting for the comp board. I did not feel that I could come to the board and say, my guys have been certified since twenty twenty. They're comp board employees. I want you to give them a nine point three percent pay increase because they've earned it. I personally felt it was best if I waited until, not only for. Hoping that you guys would approve it, but also for the county budget. I mean, I try to be this way responsible and to come to you and say, can we pay nine point three percent? For everyone in my office, or wait until the comp board actually fully funded the individuals in my office and come to you. And so the county is only on the book, three of them versus seven of them. So that was my personal reason why I did not come back in twenty twenty when they became certified.
Okay. And, and then, but like if we did it, if we waited until next year's budget, so we could put it in the budget.
By the other four employees in my office are already receiving their nine point three percent as of July one of this year. So I'm asking you to treat the others consistently with. That's what I'm asking for now.
The only word I used was. Then that one was, thanks, Kate. We really appreciate you telling us all this stuff in our lap.
See, I have read before that getting one won't, we should certify in three months. But it is a much reduced amount because it's based on the allocation to get, not the authorized salary. The authorized salary is, you know, and that would break, it was the minimum authorized. You still pay them more to hire them to do that. But I'll say it again, the authorized. The allocated money we give in the comp board is less than twenty thousand dollars each of the three positions in my office. And so they get nine point three of sixteen thousand, seventeen thousand, about eighteen. I would ask that you would consider this because the benefit of Braxton County of nine point three percent. Or her folks are unfunded, not ones, and the ones that are, who at least the minimum of their salary that's. The comp board publishes. Uh, if you don't, I got one that's going to get potentially nine point three percent of. Of thirty-two thousand and three that have been in the program, won for sixteen years, is getting nine point three percent of sixteen thousand.
Seems to me that the request is nine point three percent of. Well, we should be, the pain is the nine point three percent of the amount that the state is paying out. Separate that, right?
That's why I would trust, my, my lowest paid employee is not even considered a deputy clerk. Or, or she's considered a general clerk, which is just somebody who answers phones and does.
But your, your ask of the, of the nine point three for your.
It's paid from her salary, which is.
But it's not, it's not based on the comp board.
Yes, yes. She has comp board funded positions, which is less than what the position actually makes the county supplement that. And she is, this treadway is taking, she is basing the three that are non-comp board funded, she is, she is basing that amount on the lowest. Cut or funded.
So, I, I would suggest, now that we are considering more than Trissy brought to the table. Uh, I mean, it sounds like. Sounds like it's. Can, can we defer this until the next meeting or, or whatever and just have facts of who does this? Who would this apply to with that? Yeah, I mean, that's really how I'm going to know what the budget, what, what.
And, yeah, and we also know this is all come up, probably come up every year. So why don't we have something in place so that it is in the budget, where, whatever? So that we don't have to go through the same thing year after year after year. If we really believe in, we need to do the right thing. Uh, for the people who are not certified, um, that, that we need to, we need to say that. And we need to make some kind of forgiveness in our planning when we do budgets. We need to talk about.
Could we use our discretionary or nine thousand dollars or whatever?
Yeah, just somewhere.
We could use that for this. I mean, that's what, that's. Well, you have a motion for this. I tell you right now, I was sitting here thinking the same thing that Chris just said about. Bring it back August seventeenth and figure out what the whole thing is. Just rather than doing this three times or whatever.
In the most.
But that's what I'm saying, it's just Trissy's numbers. It's just Trissy's numbers. Anybody else can.
No.
There, there you are.
Comp turn it as a master prosecutor and career prosecutor, then ensure of course that math and that. They, these programs are basically same calling to this by the comp board and you want to take them.
I'm just trying to figure out how many people are we talking about.
I understand, I understand. If, if we're to figure that out, let's, let's defer. Get the numbers to come back and know what we're, exactly what we're talking about. I'm confused now.
You, you said you had one person that was, uh, funded, right?
Correct. Well, authorized, it's not funded.
Right.
But has, but has a certification, correct?
Will is about three months. She does not.
So it's not four in the office.
The other three. Uh, I, I, I will come back and ask y'all to do this at the minimum salary for their positions. Uh, I, I, I will come back and ask y'all to do this at the minimum salary for their positions. And not the allocated much reduced amount of comp board bases it on, sixteen thousand. This is almost here. If we're going to look at doing the nine point three based on the minimum salary of some of these positions. And I can consider that and be consistent for all of the positions. We don't pay sixteen thousand, we don't pay thirty two.
So I guess I'm, I'm clear that Mr. Treadway or Treadway during nine point three percent of the board compensation.
Comp.
Mr. Sheridan referring to sixteen thousand.
I, I'm just envisioning a spreadsheet that shows all this.
I think what he's saying is in this office, everyone has a different amount.
So I use thirty two one nine, that's what the lowest paid comp board position in my office receives. And so I use that big, the lowest paid for my other three.
Whereas, whereas Mr. Sheridan's saying. His position, I, I, I think the strideways are maybe the comp board funded amount is, is maybe, uh. Well, you know, the allocate amount, but it's probably, it's higher based upon the tiers of the position.
Right, the comp board K bands and tiers are different.
Whereas Melos, whereas, whereas Melos saying, Sheridan saying. His hi, his higher grade position, the comp board funded amount is lower than some lower, lower grade positions.
Okay.
All right, all right. And then we can look at the whole thing, the whole issue that they're doing.
Yeah, yeah. And the board supervisors defer certification pay for the clerk, the circuit court's office. For the three non-compensation board funded position. The total amount of eight thousand nine hundred and eighty-two dollars to be, I think you probably just leave her right there.
So.
Motion made on the fair child segment by Mr. Seager, all in favor, say aye. A vote, chair of both time, we fast.
So let's be clear on what we're looking for, for next steps. Uh, we're looking for something that shows the data relevant to all employees this would apply to. And, and talking about the difference in percentages based upon which office it is. Yeah, I'd like to see. Yeah, I mean, what, I, I think, what, I think what, what you're gonna probably want to see, you're gonna probably want to see both of their offices. What are the, what are the comp board funded amounts? For each of the positions and we can leave names out and then what that equates to, because you all are going to have to determine. But for instance, like Mr. Sheridan, as Mr. Sheridan said. A higher grade position is, is getting less reimbursement from the comp board. So if, if the board is basing it on what Ms. Treadway said, she's basing it on her lowest paid. But his lowest comp board funded position is actually probably his highest grade position.
So, um, Mr. Sheridan, you're, you're a person who in three months will be certified, where do we pick her?
She won't be certified. Till then.
And she's just like that. It's a little different, she's authorized, but the comp board has no allocation, zero funding. And so that will be like, like we said. Excepted the possibility the comp board may eventually give us some money for that authorized position. Versus probably not ever getting any comp board money for non-authorized comp board positions with county crew. And it's, you know, just as.
All right, thank y'all, thank you.
Thank you.
C.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Like you said, here's my present that for our twenty four budget calendar. We basically follow the same thing that we did last year as far as the meeting and work session. So they've changed for this year, if, if you're in assessment year, which means we may need to set the max real estate tax rate earlier. So we may need to set that by February twenty second in order to hold pro returns in April. And we will need to set the proposed at five twenty four budget and accounting their tax rate on March fifteenth.
And, and, and just, just one thing too, we just, if you see on here or February second, it says set max real estate tax rate for advertising. And that's basically the reassessed rate in the package. We, we, we just missed that little piece on there, but, but this is the revised calendar.
That's where we said to one, if we cannot.
Correct, yeah, and that, that's where we have to show, here's our current tax rate based upon reassessment, here's what the equalized tax rate is. So the public is fully aware that budget, that the reassessment and what they know with equalized rate amount is, is separate from kind of the budget process itself.
And when we have the reassessment.
What's that?
When will the reassessment be done?
Oh, Mr. Sheridan.
Probably use a couple of quick things to add, if we can, if we're involved at our regular meeting on April nineteenth, we're holding a special meeting on April twenty fifth.
And we can't put them so far ahead. Just wondering when the reassessment will be done.
Reassessment has been completed right now. They sent the bank sending out notice to the landowners in October. The successor hearing should be done for a couple of weeks in November. But the, and, and then the backspace, you know, the, the injuries, the differences that may be the case. Should be effective January first. January first of five months from now is when they will be affected. Um, and right by home will be saying, there's this pain, we can, you know. Pretty significant injuries that they've had, that's no surprise to anybody that's on the sale of office. The reassessments are based on actual sales for that.
Jeff, we'll know, we'll know. All right, thank you, sir.
I move the board's.
What is?
I move the board of supervisors approve the FY twenty four budget calendar.
That's, that motion made on this quarter, second by Mrs. Seager, all in favor, say aye. Opposed, chair of both aye. Motion passes five zero. Next up to FY twenty two, board supervisors continue to budget transfer, can, can either turn it, be county attorney's budget.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll cover this. Again, we budgeted about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars every year for the county attorney budget. Um, this year, you know, just with some additional, uh, contractual, um. Back and forth that we've had, we've had some, we, we've had to actually, uh, um. Write some letters and, and, and get a little more involved with some of the contracts for performance issues. You know, one example, we had a, we had a contract that wasn't performing and we had to get county attorney's office involved. We ended up getting a credit for twenty thousand dollars of contract on that. So it just, it, it just varied amounts of things, you know, we've had more contracts this year. Um, you know, the county attorney's office was also insisting a little bit more when Ms. Tollor left, when Cindy Toll, the purchasing officer left. Um, in addition, we've just had some more special things come up this year that are a little outside the norm. So again, we've been right around two hundred and thirty thousand every year this year where, where expenditures are coming in. We're at about two sixty eight, so to, to make the budget, um, just in line and, 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 and with it, stay within the budget. I'm requesting a thirty eight thousand six twenty eight transfer from D O S contingency. All right, and, and again, this just shows kind of fiscal year, um, county attorney costs. Now, these costs in here do not include costs related to real estate acquisition, designs, prosthetics, project or anything like this. This is kind of standard cost, but you can see those were where our year-to-date expenditures have been from year to year. And, you know, for the last three years, we've come under, hunted by about, you know, thirty five thousand dollars for, for county attorney costs. This year just were thirty five thousand to the opposite. And how much is in the community? Uh, well, I mean, right now, I mean, this, this budget transfer for fiscal year twenty two, remember fiscal year twenty two ends June thirtieth. These costs are for fiscal year twenty two, it basically wipes down to there's only a thousand dollars left in D O S contingency.
Can the burners have a question? Can we get a motion?
I move the board supervisors approve a budget transfer of thirty eight thousand six hundred and twenty eight dollars. From FY twenty two, realize contingent of budget to the FY twenty two, ninety two budget day, this obviously.
And motion made on the secret segment by Mrs. Booker, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, chair of both aye, motion passes five zero. Thank this pitcher. Put E, closed landfill environmental monitoring program, A P C well installation.
Yeah, so, so really quick and, and, and Mr. Uh, Mr. Hickman can answer questions too on this. So again, um, we do landfill monitoring at, at the closed landfill. Um, and so we've got engineers that do all the monitoring. They have to monitor, there's a bunch of wells and, uh, wellheads all around the landfill and they've got to monitor. Uh, groundwater protection standards in all those wells. Um, so Drake Raiden is the county's, um, is the county's engineer that does the, that does the monitoring. And the wells, uh, one of the wells has an exceedance in, maybe Mr. Hickman.
Difluor.
Yeah, difluor ethane, um, during one of their first semi-annual s- samplings. These, um, findings have to be reported to the Department of Environmental Quality. And when these findings come up, the, uh, D Q says, county, you've got to do certain things to make sure that, that this is not becoming an issue. Um, so as, as discussed with the engineers. The best point or the best method is to now drill a new well near. Or downgrade from, from the well that is, is, is an exceedance, is that correct? So, so that's, that's why we're doing what we're doing. Um, so really, the project agreement eleven is for work associated with engineering for it. Um, with Drake Raiden's project agreement and number eleven, that to exceed seventeen thousand. But, and then there's times that we have to get this done, it's a requirement by D D Q, we have to do some of these things. And then there is a contract associated with this whole agreement for the well with Griller Davidson Drilling. Mr. Hickman, do you want to add anything to, to that or anything that I missed or?
I guess the same time is right, you have to work on the D Q.
I mean, what you found in the water, I'm probably all, um, attached sites down the hill. Washington's over here, um, Jones is over here. What is the? Stuff that you found, the chemical or whatever. Awful, I guess it is, if you all have digged a new well.
Whatever, every quarter, Drake Raiden tests. The, uh, water wells are inside our old landfill. And they test for different chemicals. And there is D Q guys on the levels of these chemicals, there's going to be chemicals because it's an old landfill. And so they use difluor ethane, they have, um, okay, two point six. Yeah, our parts are billion is, uh, requirement, there goes about that. And they found in well number nine that it was three. And came back in the early part of the year, first quarter, next time they tested it, they retested it, I think three point six. So the guidelines are for us drilling well, uh, down gradient to see if. How the water is flowing in that area.
And what does that chemical do? Anybody else know how to ask this? Uh huh, who's the chemical scientist on this round table? Uh, or how harmful is it?
I, I can't.
Okay, great.
Is this well, uh, one of the counties or someone else's?
It is our well, it's on top of that landfill.
And is it used by anyone?
No, it's not, it's about eighty D, it's just drilled for testing.
Yeah, there's, so, so you got the big old landfill, closed landfill, and you've got a bunch of wells around the landfill. That are, you're required to drill to test the water that, that is around that landfill. To make sure that what is in the landfill isn't going, going young. One of the wells that are right there is, is testing for levels above what it needs to be. So what, what Drake Raiden is suggesting, testing well further down grade from that one well. Cause it's just, how many wel, how many wells are out there, you know?
Nine.
There's nine wells out there.
And when can we close nine for us, those nine wells?
Two thousand or eight? Seven or eight, I think, yeah.
They've been there, they'll be tested.
Yes, they're going to be tested for several years.
Thirty?
Thirty years.
I'm just saying, yeah.
I'm just like, we're.
I'm not sure if it's something harmful that they would.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, I've noticed it, I'm just.
Yeah, I mean, this is, so this is for her to answer questions, so, so no, we don't, we don't know exactly what chemicals, but, but again. Uh, again, if, if there was major concern. D Q would certainly require the county to notify everyone around, so again, they're trying to drill the, the downgrading one. To make sure there's not a bigger concern. If, if that well produces exceedances to what levels. Then we probably have a bigger issue that, that we're going to need to monitor more closely and, you know, having a closed landfill is not a, a cheap, a cheap enterprise.
Yeah, cause I know, but then they test their, well, they put a notice.
Yes.
And I'd like to know.
Yeah, but that's.
Yeah.
It's paint. That's, yeah, that's basically what my thing. Yeah, that's all right.
I knew I had a sign.
Been solving.
Thank God.
Oh, sorry, it'll clean it off. Well, my, my one question. They, could this be a good, to the extremely wet conditions?
No, I don't.
It's something that's.
Down, it's underground, okay, all right, well, I mean, it is what it is, we have to deal with it.
Uh, I would like to, uh, remind everyone that annually, the, is it the, um. Uh, water can test for very little expense. I think it's in the spring and is it the pond hill?
Yeah.
I think. No, I think, I think the cooperate, if you bring your water to the.
Actually getting it tested, in an expression age.
Yes.
Same arrow too.
Yeah.
Yeah, because if you wanted to take your water to private, you can be very expensive. It's really nice to offer them, yeah.
Yeah, all right, so, do we have a motion?
I move the board's. I move the board's providers approved project agreement number eleven, into that county's operating assistance. L L C for project management and field services while tackling well condition of forty. The A P C application assists with public notice and advertising relates to installation of the A P C well as more specifically set forth in the project agreement number eleven. For a cost in an amount not exceed seventeen thousand four hundred and fifty one dollars and further authorized by county administrator. Execute agreement subject to approval as to form by the county.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, second by Mrs. Booker, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, chair of both aye, motion passes five zero, number two.
I move the board's providers approved the well contract date August third, twenty twenty two, between for that calendar. And Davidson Drilling Inc. for drilling of an A P C well of an anticipated depth of sixty feet. As a, as in a small emergency procurement under Virginia code. Two dot two dash forty three oh three F due to issues identified in the FY twenty twenty two sampling by Drake Raiden. At the closed landfill, there's an immediate need to install A P C well owing to regular, regulatory requirements and time periods. Including under nine V A C twenty dash eighty one dash two sixty and guidance from D A Q for a cost of four thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars. Which cost will be increased or decreased by fifty three dollars per foot based on actual depth of well required. But it no event should be more than ten thousand dollars and further authorized by county administrator to execute agreements. Subject to approval as to form by the county attorney.
Okay.
So, so should may, my Mr. O'Brien, second by Mrs. Booker, all in favor, say aye. Oppose, chair of both aye, motion passes five zero.
And, and just one thing to note too, under consent agenda, we normally have capital reserve maintenance funds. So under C M F, there was a, an agenda item convenience center well number nine. That's the funding mechanism to fund these, these, these contracts to do the work. So again, that's just under consent agenda.
All right, F, late on telephoning, rest, U C F P funding request changed, so.
Yeah. Let me make this one quick. Okay, so in FY twenty two budget, the board approved hundred thousand for partial funding of Lake Monticello ambulance five five four. Lake Monticello only needed a hundred K from the county to replace the ambulance. That ambulance was in an accident and they received insurance, insurance claim funding of around two hundred thousand. So again, in the budget, they requested a hundred thousand at the time the board approved that funding for all of the CIP in FY twenty two. As recently, Lake Monticello is requesting that due to the fact that the county is not providing majority of the funding for five five four. Again, with debt proceeds, it's required to title the equipment per the debt covenants to the county. So because of that, because Lake Monticello was putting in the two hundred from insurance reimbursement, they are requesting if there would be another method for funding the hundred thousand out of cash funding. So what I had recommended is in the fiscal year twenty three budget, the board approved a hundred one thousand five hundred to replace Lake Monticello Response Five. That was cash funded. So what I'm suggesting is flip flopping, paying the hundred thousand out of for Response Five to cash fund Lake Monticello's ambulance and then with that fund, Lake Monticello's Response Five.
There's no change of funds.
There's no change of funds. Now, yeah, Response Five will be debt funded. It will be titled for the county and as we've said before, you know, moving forward, the county is going to, it's going to be practice of the county for any apparatus that we fund. It should be titled by the county. If the county is providing that fair dollars to fund it, those apparatus should be reflected as assets of the county and also providing assistance and bettering the county's financial condition too, rather than just giving money elsewhere. But again, we tried to work with Lake Monticello on this one to flip out the funding. So ambulance five five four will not be titled to the county. It will be titled by Lake Monticello, but moving forward, everything would be titled to the county.
And had the board voted for that?
Board of that one.
Everything will be padded to.
It hasn't been, it hasn't been a formal vote and we could bring that back to the board. The board thinks they want to see a formal vote on that. I think we'd have to, wouldn't we? Because otherwise where would that kind of policy? Well, I mean, currently, right now, all apparatus, we're going to fire that the county purchases, they're titled to the county. And again, Fluviano Volunteer Fire is a separate corporation. Lake Monticello will be a separate corporation. So it would make sense that that the county owns all the apparatus that it purchases.
I agree. I'm just trying to be sure. I'm just asking.
Yeah, I don't need, if we haven't officially made that decision. I don't know what the precedent is going back in time to why the board said if we give money to Lake Monticello, why we would fund it, why we would own it and why we would own it. I don't know why that everything about.
Because we pay you for more than for the fire cuts.
I guess.
Thank you, thank you for everything since we've been on the board.
Been as long as I've been here, I mean.
So I'm trying. Yes, they are putting two hundred thousand towards it. Insurance. Anyway.
And so that's what I already talked about, the flip flop. And again, there's about fifteen hundred differential in the debt proceeds. We, there's things, there's interest earned on the debt proceeds. So the fifteen hundred differential would be covered by the interest earned. When we take out debt proceeds, those debt proceeds until they're spent, they sit in an interest bearing account until the proceeds are completely liquidated. So granted, the interest rate environment hasn't been fantastic the past year. Fifteen hundred dollars will be, there will be fifteen hundred dollars of earned interest to cover that amount.
We have a motion.
I move the board supervisors approve a funding source change for Lake Monticello Fire Rescue Apparatus. Changing FY twenty two ambulance five five four, funding of a hundred thousand dollars in debt proceeds to cash fund and then changing FY twenty three Response Five funding of one hundred and one thousand five hundred dollars from cash funded to debt proceeds.
Motion made by the secret taken by the speaker all in favor of saying aye. I can ask one question. I don't have my, I can do this.
Well, Mr. Lines here, if there's a question.
My question is, who owns what attack thirty in Brusher? Does the county own that? Or can't go on?
I think the county owns them all.
No, we're just saying, because I think one of them we paid for. Didn't?
I don't.
I can't remember.
Yeah.
Just because we got such a deal on Brusher. That's okay. All right. Chair votes aye, motion passed five zero. All right. Next up is John. Annual shareholder meeting proxy designation, Mr. Dog.
Yeah, again, this is just something that it's an annual thing. Let me see here. Mrs. Smith is the dot one or dot two for the letter.
She's been you here or the county manager?
No, so the board appointed Mr. O'Brien last year to be the proxy to votes. So again, the board can determine, one of the board members can be the proxy or they can appoint one of the actual appointed board members, Hal Morgan or Leslie Woodfolk as the proxy or they could appoint me. I think it was determined, I think it was determined last year, I think from out of a, maybe a convenience factor.
It was a Zoom meeting last year.
Oh, and maybe because of the John. Yeah, the legal oversight.
Yeah.
The question of why Leslie Woodfolk is not appointed, does that mean she?
She just took, she just.
July one.
She's appointed as a July one.
Okay, all right. I was a little worried because you.
Oh, it's the sixth third and she's not.
Yeah, this is, this is. Yeah, you see right here, it's an FY twenty two meeting attendance and she wasn't appointed in FY twenty two.
Okay.
That's what that, that's a bad.
She's still on the.
She's on the board. Yeah, she really is on board.
All right, good.
I don't feel personally you need to do it again. I'm okay with supporting that. At least counting board is what those all. I have a lot of insight into what's going on. So I am comfortable with his decision made.
Anyone else have any comments? No? All right. Do we have more? Morgan, do we have a motion?
I move the board supervisors approve designation of Harold Morgan as proxy for the governing body of the John annual shareholder in October twelve twenty two.
And second.
Okay.
All right, no motion made by Mr. O'Brien, taken by Ms. Porter, all in favor of saying aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. We have no appointments and bless you both for sitting there this long and waiting for us. Next up, presentation H. Maccah update, Miss Sarah Hanks. Supported by Ms. Armstrong and Mr. Watt.
And Miss Smith.
And Miss Smith. I'm sorry, is that reaching that in there? I don't believe.
Thank you. Please, gentlemen, for chair and your time. I have a long evening thus far, so I'd like to maintain our ten minute presentation time, but also any questions or concerns you have, and be sure you're well informed about operations in Mac and Fluvan County. A few updates on our work in FY twenty two. We serve four hundred and eighty seven families who are able to avoid visually disconnection. We were able to either avoid that disconnection worse before than restoring that service. One hundred and forty eight families avoided eviction or foreclosure because of our diseases and children. Collective Mac has invested a little more than one hundred and twenty thousand dollars in direct line services in the community. And that investment represents a sixty six percent increase in utility assistance to the act and a fifty three percent increase in rent and mortgage relief assistance over at Blackstone. You'll see the need for Fluvan County, especially as you noted inflation, the challenges of the deserts. The economy as it sits post pandemic and pre pandemic have been challenging for many of you. We serve eight hundred and sixty one unique households via the food pantry. We also serve twenty preschool age children in our Head Start program at the Involved Entry School. That classroom remains fully enrolled annually at capacity and we have a waiting list for students who aren't eager to engage in preschool program. We'd like to commend Fluvan County Public Schools for their support, coordinated enrollment with their staff and farming have been outstanding and will award a great year partnership in serving families with confidence, family support services, and really high quality early job education. Project Discovery continues to support our high school students in pursuing work development, those secondary education opportunities as well as career paths, trade certification, and opportunity to ensure that within six months of graduation from Fluvan County High School are able to obtain a family or household support. Of these programs, we wanted to visit a little bit more today about the investment that we're making in emergency assistance and our food pantry transitions in the coming months. Kathy Smith has taken on the role of emergency assistance coordinator recent months and she said, so men spend a lot of her time upgrading our electronic interface. Client can now apply online for emergency assistance. They're able to access that application for all twenty four seven. We're able to increase equity and partnership with our clients by providing language accommodations in their native language, in addition to English, and create additional opportunities for us after work along with clients to meet their needs in a timely fashion, but also in a way that provides equity and humanization to their experience. In regards to our partnership with SCFS and Head Start, as I mentioned, we continue to remain fully enrolled with twenty students. We have two new teaching staff who have been a teaching team in Alamo County that we've transitioned to Fluvan. Both Fluvan County residents. We're excited. They spent this week in free service and I'm really confident in the impact it will make in the community and service offerings as well. And lastly, I know you're aware of many of the conversations we've had in regards to the first store, our food pantry and collaboration with Fluvan Christian Services Society. And I wanted to update you on our attendance and plans with your support moving forward to expand our food service, our food pantry service for residents in the community. Over the past two years, we've really been exploring more what food deserts, access to nutritious foods and the need for emergency food supports in Fluvan County really means. You'll see annually, we have determined its need in Fluvan. That's eight hundred and sixty one unique households visiting their food pantry. Currently, our operation is dry for, we maintained that during the pandemic and during the uncertain times that have followed. We've been operating five days a week in the exception of holidays or truly inclement weather from eleven to one. We provide approximately sixty to eighty pounds of food per household visit. So roughly sixty eight, sixty nine thousand pounds of food are being distributed each year. We believe that there's an opportunity to transition the first store to a space where we can enhance and increase our opportunity to serve clients with a shopper choice model. In partnership with SCFS, we're hoping to close out our first store operation during the coming month. Transition food service and food pantry operation to that space. Will allow shoppers in and they'll have a guided shopping experience. There are other community organizations in neighboring localities that do just that. It allows each individual and family to make food choices that are in best interest of their family's nutritional needs and it provides the opportunity for them to have client choice in their food and nutrition. It ensures that the food we're providing, they have the capability to prepare in their home and use meaningfully. Data suggests that this model also reduces food waste and will allow the donated foods in our partnership with SCFS and Blue Ridge Food Bank to be utilized throughout the community and more responsible manner. We do know according to the Canadian Department of Health that approximately twenty four point eight percent of Fluvan residents will work insufficient access to nutritious foods. Our food pantry has continued to meet those needs and those increasing demands. And now it's our opportunity to invite our community into that partnership and explore new ways to do that work in states that the county generously provides to meet increasing demands of man with low income and crisis situation in the community. We're excited to have Mr. Matt Washington with us today, supporting that as well. I appreciate your appointment and him to our board, interviewing the board of our staff. Wanted to provide you with a brief update and any community questions or concerns you have. Understanding that our partnership is essential in service to Fluvan County residents. With that, I'll call. And be sure that I am responder about.
I have a couple of questions. You said where you're moving Mac to, and I didn't catch where that was.
So currently, our operation is in the neighborhood link, the lower level, and we operate our first store in that space. Yeah. We intend to move the food pantry operation, which would transition the owner and operator experience of the food pantry from SCFS to Mac fully.
FC.
The.
Oh, okay.
So they currently are the owners. We currently operate the food pantry. That's our partnership. In evaluation of their organizational restructuring and our agency's work, it's been determined and approved by their organization pending any concerns of the county transition of that operation fully to our programmatic and fiscal leadership. So we remove it from the shed out at, in a series of sheds that we've three into the building.
Yeah, so if you're right out here and the building is right up, yeah, right up. You'll see like the shed storage buildings, some of them are refrigerated for dried goods and cold goods. And then the building right below the gymnasium there where the Mac thrift shop is. So they're proposing to transition from more outside to more of an inside experience. And the one thing, you know, we'll have, if the board is fine moving forward in this, you know, the county will certainly have to work on some type of new memorandum of agreement with Mac for, you know, what this new kind of space sharing looks like.
Okay. And the question is, how do you all bet who needs services? So for example, getting electricity turned back on when it's been turned off on. How do you all determine whether it's something you should participate in or these people just won't work and so therefore they just got the electricity turned off?
You're right. Eligibility criteria, those are what I've all talked about in our application before, were required federally by federal standards as well as state to have on file authorization of certain benefits. So they would be SNAP benefits. Living to eligible services. If they have a bit of a need notice, their writing criteria, our staff are term collecting that full schedule documents and reviewing those to be sure that they match the eligibility criteria for arriving funding sources. In some cases, we have private contribution that allows us to meet needs outside of those state or federal guidelines and those crisis or emergency circumstances. It may not be that family in the working period is working, but they have a car emergency or medical bill that they have to write. And so we're grateful to have mixed funding sources that allows us to respond to the great needs of the community. We can certainly provide more information about that eligibility, but each client is then specifically to be sure that we're able to support their need at that time.
And I just, that's what, I just want to be sure. Of course, there's people that will view that. And I just wanted to be sure there's ways to make sure the well is being tasked by people who should be.
I think one of the important things that we're moving toward is understanding how we partner with our client for coaching and education so that they can transcend the social learning condition that they're experiencing with resources that are not a one-time class or coaching experience, but a long-term partnership to help walk them through and support the challenges that arise in everyday life. It's really difficult to attend one budgeting class for an hour and become deficient when the circumstance in everyday life may not present the buffer of possibility. But we look to engage community volunteer coaches and stand our stamp to provide that kind of support for the community. Where we're actually able to move forward through a path.
I have a couple of questions that I wanted to respond to the first thing. I have personally had to work with a family to get service and believe me, you have to qualify the paperwork. And you have to even send to the mortgage company that W F nine. And I'm always trying to say, well, I have to do this all. So they do have a real good program. I'm concerned about the applying online. I think a lot of our people are used to sitting down face to face. Would there ever be those kinds of opportunities? Because I did this one. I have computers. I had to work with those computers. And the other thing is, when you close the thrift shop, how do you plan on all of the things that's there? How are you going to move those? I'm sure people, you know, will come in and purchase them and at a low price. But you have a lot of things, a lot of nice things in the thrift shop. So those are the two things I would. Those are the um two things I was under interest in applying online.
Uh we do hope to promote online applications for many of our clients, but a convenient way for them to. Take care of that and resolve their own contract or application and upload all their documents, without having to drive over. Or new email, which is an often secure for the confidentiality that they're driving. We do intend in the transition of the food pantry to have space for clients to visit with our staff. And continue to do uh in-person work at all rural counties where we provide emergency assistance. Printed applications are still available for the needs, our request is more often right now, we're putting those over the phone. Rather than having a client come in and often make multiple trips back and forth because they don't have all the documentation upfront. Despite being available on this, it's hard to collect all that ones. Uh so a lot of them are able to meet their needs without a transportation cost uh or barrier. And then allow them to upload or send those out. Yes, we will have client interface and that will be utilized differently, uh I anticipate. Imagine we have a head start family that's involved in our preschool program. Currently, uh we're using more public stations, libraries, um or meeting in a client's home. And sometimes that's that's comfortable in the later and sometimes having faith at the Mac office. Where there are other communities and services and families they also benefit from will be a benefit to those individuals, so we're excited to do lots of those options. Did you say you were going to go to the thrift shop? That's our intention at this time of the support of moving the food pantry into that space. Uh so the thing that we'll maintain and this is where I want to talk through the the sale process. Um we intend to maintain some critical items there, we know that those are a high need in this community. We want to make sure that those are available at no cost to families, we can keep these three those for. Uh we know that often new unused pajamas, underwear and socks are often needed on an emergency basis. So we'll be responsible to those need, again, those items will continue to be made available for families on a, and at a need basis and as time is available. Uh but yes, we we would like to propose uh the closure of the thrift store. We believe there are other ways, we're going to be helping the community, that we need to meet the very basic needs and values to ensure they have safe, stable housing. Nutritious food and that they're able to maintain a balanced well-being so that they can pursue work or employment, education. Nurture their children, uh and those baseline needs are really our first target. We're building on that educational programs and coaching to ensure we have a whole family, two generations, first to race gener- of generational capacity. And to ensure that the comprehensive services, things like accessing a thrift store for low-cost items are still available in our community. We'll be partnering with Goodwill to be sure that if there's a family in need of services, um their immediate household items or clothing. They'll have vouchers to visit a a local thrift store and still receive access to low-cost items or free items with our support. Um but the operation of the thrift store at this time, um doesn't necessarily allow the community to invest in data. And for the other day, we have a health requirement in state about the need of Luban County. Our own data tells us that the needs are exceptional, um creating an opportunity for families to access these resources in new and different ways. Uh we will have a lasting.
Are you planning on paying the most?
We like Goodwill, um so currently Kathy's taking on our emergency assistance programming. We budgeted this year to raise in a food pantry coordinator. Uh and hopes to also involve many of our community partners and volunteer efforts in a new model. Uh it will be essential that we have community support and we'll be able to do that in a new, different way and safely in space that we have, uh even post. Uh in regards to anything we currently have, we've sort of been cultivated uh by our community and generous United and support our mission. We do intend to get a sale this Friday and Saturday, we want to make sure that we provide access for families back to school. Uh so it's less than the guidance of M I E, we'll also be open most of next week, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday tend to shoot each night. Uh and we anticipate that we're back again for five hours and all the other items uh at fifteen percent discount. That we'll be able to ensure the community have access to those resources right away for the service layer. And that my part in the inquiry may be live from that time. After that period, we'll take a moment to reflect on what's working and what's not, where are our areas of need in our community and how we best receive the improvement.
It will be the loss of the revenue from the thrift store impacting operations.
Yes.
Uh how are you, um are you integrated with social services? Do you work with one another?
Yes, we do, uh not only for emergency systems, we work with D S S staff, uh also in support of our head start students. Um we're working closely with uh D S S supporters, school downward at all times to serve the community.
All right, thank you so very much. Well, we thank you all for everything that you do and for coming out. And we help deliver stuff, or you know where it does.
I appreciate that, because we have some of the most dedicated and hardworking staff, you're on in Luban County. We've heard that over and over again at our county employees, uh we appreciate that and support the county and each of you. Uh and we're within our staff for their incredible effort in ensuring that this happens.
The same, it's just one thing, and maybe I haven't said, so as far as kind of some of the transitioning, I mean, just since there's gonna. You're obviously gonna need to do some, I guess, modifications or some renovations or upgrades of that space, when do you anticipate? Or what is the target date for having kind of that transition, either starting or being completed?
I think post our sale next week, we determine if we need to another sale or partner another organizations to utilize the items that have been donated. In for their purposes serving the community, uh in an ideal world, uh barring any complications, we love to be open in early October in a new model, though we know. Or at this time, we don't anticipate any rate in services for the food pantry, and if that advances, we'll promote that to the community in advance. To have additional hours around the community so that there aren't interruptions to those services. The outfits in the space are primarily going to be electrical. So we need to make sure that uh we upgrade some of those outlets. To manage the higher voltage use of freezers and refrigerators, but that will be our primary uh expense and renovation, if you will. Uh we'll take on that cost and we'll work in terms of the county to do that. All other space needs are met by furnishings, um so we don't need to pay any major renovations outside. It's simply upgrading electrical to accommodate fridges, freezers and other racks.
And then what about um some of the 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 buildings, the sheds and stuff like that that are out there, what's what's the, what's the repurpose or is there a need for them still?
Some of those may be well utilized for some draft storages. We have several food pantries that we are using in benchmark organizations that we visited or researched. And they're often an opportunity to eventually create a new toilet paper, so they care about us, so diapers. They can receive them bulk and store, uh I think in partnership with the county and SCSS. It's not going to be for us to collaborate on what the use might be as those don't belong to us. Uh and we might have some opportunity then to understand what that use would be for.
Yes, the county, the county came, had an agreement with SCSS. For kind of um the way that you're allowing SCSS to use, basically, I think it's a. A a low-cost rental space back there for for the county land.
I'm going to bet you that they're profitable, but they also are going to be able to store their gift.
For how many days?
Activities, operation activities, because they've utilized, put them around the county.
So I think it'll get an upcoming conversation that we're hopeful that it will be necessary, and certainly by the way you're not really loving last year. And then, they could be responsible and reflect their cultural or regard to these things, something in the winter and how to enjoy something in the city. Um that that also will all come um and be in that way.
And 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 just one last question, you know, you know, obviously above the space, we've got uh the gymnasium and stuff like that and. There's no concern with having the gymnasium there and then that space down below or anything?
No.
I don't mind you some.
Well, I just have to coordinate with public works as well as far as those still lost patients.
Hopefully, and hopefully it will, it will be easily.
Once again, thank you so very much for all you guys. Before we move on to the series, but first of all, that was a great presentation and it was fact filled. And when it comes to. Our budget. I I I had talked about uh during the budget season, that some of these were relations that we fund. Um we do a shotgun that we have a whole year and and then suddenly. Uh we get four presentations a night that I'm supposed to get any clue about what they do and and whether I should be giving them funding. And that's the type of presentation that I feel like throughout the year, especially some of the larger ones, we should be getting that. So we're educated on what they do instead of, you know, it's nine o'clock and and we gotta go into the call session, blah blah blah. So I just commend that and I think that's what we should be doing with most of them, most of the nonprofits.
Yeah, we've talked about that staggering a few throughout the year. We can hear them ask, ask questions, yeah, we need to, need to do that. Now, we have an agency council and um I don't know whether we sent board members the minutes, we're gonna start. Um sending the minutes to board members so that you can, because throughout the year, they have certain activities. And they report on those every month, the first, third, and month. That will kind of keep you alerted too on the kinds of things that they're doing and hopefully we'll start doing that to help us.
From the areas you did, usually. Now, as in depth of presentations, if the minor politicians are made, that as well to to kind of affect the boards.
And we have a book, but two that we, by the time we were putting books together, every nonprofit, they have their book in what they need and that is enough. These are, I would prefer to see that person standing in front of you, giving you those numbers, you get to.
So, so with, with that said, it's like you agree and um. I I've had conversations with board members throughout the year that whether we should do that or not, and I don't want us. But we often talk about something to go, yep, that's a good idea, I mean, I don't hate, um so. Be it in the retreat or now, I I want to figure out how, if 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 we are as a board saying we want to have this type of presentation. And if we do, what's the system and schedule and how that.
Yeah, I would add one other thing too, which is that almost all of those agencies will be more than happy to sit down with you. And go on great detail.
Yeah.
Uh that information, so they make themselves available to that. And then, you know, first, for members who have been on the board for many years, they've seen, you know, the work and the presentations year over year, so they have a very good sense of. You know, part of it, part of the process should include the fact that some things stay static and there's not a lot of change uh from that standpoint. And I I recognize each of the information.
Yeah, I mean, we 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 can certainly request it, and and maybe just just so I'm clear. In in my understanding that the board doesn't want the agencies to come to do a budget presentation where they list that data or. I mean, we we could certainly have like, like Miss Hankston have requests that they come. Start coming down and start doing whatever type of updates they want to do before, I'm just trying to figure out, do you still want some type of. Budget presentations then, and that's where they usually have historically, you know, kind of said, well, this is kind of what we're doing. And this is kind of what the funding is going to, going to do, or instead of having to be. One, at one point, it used to be one meeting, then we spread it out to two meetings, then, you know, we could spread it out to, you know. Three or four, five or six meetings or something like that, so it's not so many in one evening, that I guess I'm trying to look for a little direction from the board.
So I I my suggestion would be starting. How do we deal with whether we have these presentations and and what their likelihood or the schedule? And then decide, now that we've established that, what do we do about? The normal process in the beginning of the year and uh without saying an organization, I'll I'll give an example. There's an organization that comes in front of this board a lot that uh some staff members. Luban staff members wanted me to understand some things about whether we're really getting the value out of our spend. And um. And a more in-depth conversation with that organization with this board might have flushed out that maybe we're not, or maybe we are. So I I think those types of conversations need to be had where there's more questions that can be asked. Can you think about how many questions we just asked her? Um because she gave more in-depth of a presentation, so. Maybe we want to, I just don't want to let it go, maybe we want to. Come back with some thoughts next meeting or next month, I don't care. But whatever we do, let's not, you know, waste our breath for a ten-minute conversation and then talk about it again five months from now. Any other thought?
I agree.
Well, the problem is going one-on-one, if they're gonna want to come in and have their. Conversation to us a bunch of times, because they don't, they don't want to speak in June.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we we can re- we can request, but we can't mandate, we want you to come in October and then give a presentation to the board. So I guess it's.
Well, I mean, we've talked, one thing. Committee. Well, more one idea is to flow it out than there's a committee, that there's sort of a grading process, you know. Criteria process, that that committee sits down and meets with the, the organization in advance. And then they can make kind of their recommendations, I know my thoughts and I.
And I think so.
I mean, I know that that there is some give and take between the county administration and those organizations as well too. Uh and then some organizations, you know, were dictated based on our population size, as an example. So, yeah, I mean, but there are, there are some that get, you know, substantial amount of funding and as we saw with the. With um with John, that that's not always. You know, always handled properly, so we have that whole question about how the oversight and what happened there. It's difficult, but it's also difficult for a board to involve itself in the affairs of another body as well too.
Yeah.
It's a challenge.
I would say one other thing, as you said, we can't make them. If if we ask and you don't come, you're gonna stand in front of me uh in the first quarter next year, I'm gonna have to chuckle, you know, but um. I I'm just saying, let's figure out what the next step is right now.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, I mean, I would agree, I mean, I would agree from the standpoint of when we did it one meeting or two meetings, that's. You hear a lot of presentations and and it's a lot, it's a lot to take in, it's a lot to absorb, and sometimes you feel like. You're just trying to push through the presentations a little bit and and maybe you don't grasp really what each organization does, I mean. So, I mean, so one, we started getting budget presentations and. You know, it's tough because we don't, we don't start getting budget requests from them until end of November. And then usually right after that, I think the next two, three meetings and in the December. December and January, we usually have them come out prior to to my budget proposal to the board. I mean, but we could certainly spread those out if we wanted to say, you know, if we wanted to do it through like six meetings or something like that, so maybe you only have. I don't know, say it's like maybe four or five organizations and even yourself, and just so it's not such a, you know. Overwhelming, yeah, maybe so, um but yeah, I mean, I mean, we we could certainly, we could certainly reach out to the organizations and just say, you know, the board would really love to hear. Kind of, you know, what things you're doing besides just budget time and and and, you know, we can certainly, we certainly have them come out and kind of give updates.
We started, I'm very proud of that.
We, so so the budget requests for for all go out to, for basically Nov- November first. And then, then they're submitted by the end of November or right around Thanksgiving, and then at that point. You know, from counties, you know, we start going doing our budget stuff and then we start, um, you know. We we line up presentations for nonprofits and stuff like that. We usually, we would normally usually try and do it in December and January to have them done prior to when, when my. Those budget goes to the board. Because then we start getting, but it doesn't mean we could have, have more of those going on throughout the budget time too, we just, during budget time, we have a lot of stuff going on.
Yeah, well, and and I mean, the other thing too is, you know, if you have specific concerns. Um A, I would recommend you meet with that first and if those concerns still prevail, then. You have to come to the board, uh I think, you know, that's, that's a, that's a fine thing to do, you know, it's. The, had, had we had those concerns in place with, you know, some organizations in the past, maybe certain things would or would not have happened, so. I don't think there's anything wrong with it.
And and then too, even 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 from, you know, some of the organizations, you know, the the county has board appointed, um. County appointed of, you know, board members and stuff like that, and maybe too, it's, it's, you know, having discussions with them as well, but I mean, you know. Maybe they've got a good insight on, well, you know, here's, here's how they're representing Luban County since they're kind of in and attending the board meetings more, but you know. We can certainly, we're certainly open to doing, you know, providing some, some, some different avenues for for nonprofit presentations.
And and I'm, I'm just a policy procedure systematic minded person and. I might know the stuff, but I always go by hit box though. I might know the stuff, but I always go by hitbox though. If I'm hit by a truck tomorrow, then the system to be sure people know and are staying on board with. How the money's spent, where it goes and so on. Is is not there if we don't create something like this and it's just up to the initiative of the next guy or lady who replaces me on a hitbox truck. Um and and another thing of of. Uh an employee of the county mentioned to me um. That they have to justify their spend in in showing, you know, here's my budget for the year. And do we do that with nonprofits? Do they have to justify how they grow all the money with? Every one of them misses, how much money you spend exactly on this and that?
No.
Question was, why would, why would.
They get money from from different areas. Some of their land and state, they grow a lot of fundraising. Um uh those are good questions. In the past, the um nonprofits would give us a dinner before our meeting and they would. Stand before us and talk about what they get. Um then they would give us a booklet. Each organization and in that organization, they told you what they get and and um where they, you know, we can ask them different questions. So that was. But I think I would like to like see, what do you send to them um Eric to put their budget requests on? Is there anything other than that that you want to know from them? We wanna know how many people you serve. We wanna know. Some some really key things that that pertains to the government account.
How many meals did you job of you?
Mo- most of them, they come to us and speak and speak more than two minutes.
Right.
Tell us. Someone flew down Louisiana, served that. They all come in and tell us what we did, you know, for that.
Yeah, I'm just not sure how it's powered. They're they're coming to me. To approve giving more money and and I'm not sure. In a presentation like that, how does tie that to the justification for the money we get?
Yeah, I mean, so sometimes it's different organizations. I mean, so, you know, from the budget request form that goes out to them, you know. We ask them to kind of give some breakouts, okay, well, obviously it's ten thousand, you need to worry, give you ten thousand dollars. What do you use? What is your anticipated use of that? And they're showing, you know, you know, five thousand this, five thousand that. Now, going back to your question, no, you don't, I mean. And after the back, we don't get into the nuts and bolts of showing us, show us your, show us your your financials for how you spend Fluvana's money, because I don't. I don't think that there's ever been um. Anything that's, that says, you know, if if you don't spend all your Fluvana contribution this year, we need to give it back. Now, I mean. Some organizations may do that and.
And and I didn't anticipate you need to get it back, but yeah, justifying your house, how often have you spent till we understand.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, in the budget form, you get a, you get a request of showing them what types of programs and. Are are they anticipating to use that funding for? And then usually on the budget sheet it talks about, okay, well, what other localities or funding streams you get. If you, you know, and I think there's another section, remember practically, well, you don't get the funding, you know, how to impact your operation or 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 what you do or. And and, you know, from the board standpoint, you know, going back to that ten thousand dollar example. You know, five thousand X and five thousand Z. Well, if the board says, well, we don't believe in five thousand Z, well, maybe you're only funding the five thousand X category, but. Um I mean, we, I could send a budget sheet if the board wants to see it, nonprofit question in advance if if there's things that. That maybe you're wanna know.
Yeah, I mean, if if there's a balance, the balance is, some of us have seen the same presentation ten, twelve times. Some of us has never seen it, right? Um some of us may hear information from one group of of people and need validation of that. And that's probably, I think that's where we find the balance, but. I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna ask necessarily that we're giving five hundred dollars a month to give it a detail. So I mean, five dollars a. A year to give me a detailed statement of how they expect that five hundred dollars.
It's gonna be my last question. You know, how many groups do we get five thousand or less? And the vast majority of the groups that we get money to. Get a lot. Sixty-five thousand dollars left, yeah.
There's a few that get a lot.
We can, we can dig through every, because when we pick a threshold, you know, if you're getting over ten thousand dollars, please tell us what it means.
Yeah, I I guess from the board's standpoint, if if there's, if there's, if there may be a more. Structured method that they wanna see it done differently, you know. Whether it's broken up into, you know, from budget time and it's broken up into more meetings, if 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 you say, look, we all wanna save. Four of these presentations at a time, but I mean, just to not get such a overwhelming amount of of data and information and. But but from staff, we, you know, we can certainly use some guidance on how.
It's happened with them too, they have money.
Yeah, I I I I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't, the story heard and like that. You know, the problem, the problem becomes before me, then you're now spreading it out with ten meetings. I mean, so, that's why I like.
Yeah, I mean, you can get that volunteer.
The only problem I have with doing a committee is then you have certain people might want to first serve, and then they want to get on a committee. There's only, I know there are times when people try to do like a justice for one thing. And and that that's my.
Wait, so if you, you know. Yeah, if 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 the board has any, if if the board has any thoughts or suggestions, you wanna send me an email for how you think you wanna see it differently. I'm 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 certainly open to trying to. Structure something different that 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 you get a better value out of the presentation.
So then then let's put a time in the form of, I I I personally will need that, that if you have an opinion about it, well. Say by next board meeting, we will email you about it and give you some whatever thoughts to start doing so.
Um, okay, number one, um, uh Kelly attends the agency council meetings. Kelly is a part of it. And I can all the time. And they they put a booklet together. I think the first thing is we have a booklet of their um nonprofit and. Um I don't know that we structured it to Ted, right? It's taught us that the same thing. I have a book that has. I can give that book to other people, like past groups and people who have the information, so those are the resources. We can start off with that. And then we can also send you minutes and and they talk about what they're providing, what they're gonna do. How about they're serving? They give a lot of their person, so you really get to know them. Um and then when they come to tell you, you have a bad idea. But I think they both.
And and I think this is advantage, well, the advantage that we have is one of the things we've done. A lot of these groups have come to us like tonight, Mac, anyone spoke, oh, bless. You know, but before they get started, I think I can remember what the name of the group is, the group helps y'all interview children.
Oh, yeah, they, I mean, they came in and were able to speak to us. So that's one of the reveals. What it is. And. And and I'm, yeah, here, it's just I understand that. I'm just looking for something to be systematic. Where we, to where as an organization, we created a process for the future, for future boards, if we're all in that.
Why they're doing the, the point is that there are multiple processes. And whether it's the area, it's the council meeting, whether it's an emergency dinner, whether it's presentations, you know, so, you know, I think we wanna be careful about not creating. You know, a process that is really a process on top of another process because, you know, of unfamiliarity at a certain level, right? So I mean, I think there is a balance between, you know, creating something and then creating in such a way that it's it's really overkill uh from that standpoint.
All right, well, thank you. The guidance that we've got is that if we got something, we want an idea or idea that we want to do, then we email. We spell, we do them, we do them. Next board back at board first one is up.
How much do you have? How how much money will we spend on nonprofits in the budget? Oh, six hundred and.
Six hundred and forty, twenty, thirty thousand.
That's six hundred and twenty thousand, probably, I'm five of them probably today.
I know there's. That because I know for sure there's three, there's one organization that's eighty some thousand, another organization that's eighty some thousand. There's another organization, maybe. A hundred and fifty, a hundred and fifty.
I mean, that's that's, so if if we did this to me. To say their, they're only getting five thousand, they're only, that, we need a lot of them, but they need on their time. To come out here multiple times to see it, so we can put a positive approach on. Anyway, let's get our ideas, the million dollars, okay? Kind of being on this, I apologize for walking out there, but I got home this evening and I had a big old wet spot in my ceiling with air conditioning, you know. Not rocking, so it's about ninety-five degrees, so I gotta, gotta go over here and look at it, so I apologize for walking.
Let me say real quick, some things we need to be there. And I have the most, we need to, to me, there's, there's systems and so on that we need to improve. Um and so I I'm I'm glad for us to take the time to to ask you that today. Okay? All right, next up, is the consent agenda. J, amendment to and adoption of the Fluvana County Board of Supervisors, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting, and this is the least. K, account payable report for June twenty twenty-two, Ms. Milton. Uh L, V H Septic Wellness Program, W A P Support Letter of Support, Ms. Allen. M, C R N F Convenience Center Wellness Network, Ms. Breckin. N, Historical Structures Report Contract and First Amendment to the Contracts. Ms. Allen. Oh, thank you. O, Bonus System Maintenance for E nine one one, Amendment to the End User Agreement with Central Ring Communications LLC, Ms. Allen. And P, Closed Landfill Environmental Monitoring Programs, Ms. Allen. Is there anything more we want to pull?
Yeah, I know you're pulling um the minutes of July sixth, but I do want you to look at the um. I hope it becomes the policy, whatever that we put for the electronic party, they're in a meeting. That's at the point two, the two dash two, uh two point two dash three seven oh eight point two, the two was that call. In the minutes. There's some extra events there.
That's for J.
July.
Is it, oh, that's for I.
That was, that was the, the ten year. That, that, um, red parts. It was.
Point two, okay.
Yeah, that was fine too, but it's three seven oh eight.
Oh, seriously, it's thirty seven oh point one, two, three.
When we bring it back, it was at the next meeting, we'll have that.
All right, anyone else? All right, here now, do we have a motion to adopt a consent agenda?
I'm going to adopt a consent agenda and.
So, uh motion made by the speaker, thank you, Ms. Phil Brian, all the favors say aye. Oppose. Chair votes aye, motion passes by the evil, unfinished business.
Um. Ms. Chair, I was about to mention that since I spoke about the Fluvana Community Center. I've had some individuals who are interested in um. But okay, they'll have a wee coffee and I, I just don't wanna do anything that you're not aware of.
Yeah, we're, I I've, me and Mr. Hickman and 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 Ms. Harris, we so, we're we're gonna set up a meeting, we're trying to get a meeting maybe next week to go out there, do a walk through. We've done a walk through with this building here a little bit in this stage and we've got a meeting set up to, we're gonna have to go walk that building.
Brands and things that you could do to.
Have any questions brought forward to try to address the uh the noise from the air commission?
No.
So I I've looked into that a little bit and I I thought when you all talk, whoever was talking about the noise, that there's some boom or something in the unit.
It just rattles, the 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 vents rattling for the dampers and maybe and the, Mr. Well, and and also.
Uh when I say that, I've been in there many times, I didn't hear, I wasn't aware of the noise, but in part, we're just talking about the noise that run. You know, it's exposed ductwork that, boy, it's just blowing through that big pipe right there and um, you know, just things like uh. Duck liner, it can be done. Of course, it'd have to be a heater, I think, come and takes it out of mine, then puts it back up. Or enclosed duck liner and enclosed, that, you know, things like that, it's 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 not a hard fix, it's easy that.
Yeah, you're gonna do it. Well, I I think. I think there's a drop ceiling. I I think the vents, the ducts are below the drop ceiling, they think. The, okay, below a drop ceiling, yeah, okay, yeah. Well, I I.
And he updated that air, it's not long ago. They never train us to something, I think, for as long, anyway.
I have something to do with the construction along. Hell back, so, so close. All right, any, any other new business? All right, uh here now, allow plug, uh unfinished business, I think it's a new business. Unfinished business, is there any new business? All right, um here now, allow a plug, uh new business, and I'll open up the second round of public comment. If you'd like to speak, please step to the microphone, state your name and address, keep your comments within five minutes on topic and direct it to the board. If anyone wishes to speak to the town.
From City Bar, seven hundred sixty-eight forty, Thomas Jefferson Parkway, Calhoun, Virginia, Wayne D Farm. Logical development strategies. Development must be tied to the natural environment and its protection. While emphasizing the need for sustainable and physically, physically responsible development. Critical components of a healthy community are economic development strategies that must include maintaining Fluvana's rural character. Its heritage, nature, and agricultural enterprises. Preservation of positive gateway use sets must. Colonial surplus of land area has been scuffed and burned. One mile of the mound wall to the down line and a sore gateway to the down county. Larger buffers must be mandated between incompatible land uses and along our roads and gateways. We must preserve and protect. Mature trees along our gateways. There should be architectural standards and evaluation of all new proposed commercial and residential developments regarding. Styles and materials. Both styles and materials must protect the aesthetics and reduce the environmental footprint of any new development. Even be mindful of existing distances, homes, neighborhoods, farms, et cetera. Every area must be preserved by a good plan, which necessitates clear, strong, updated, effective, enforced zoning and subdivision ordinances. The quality of life of actual land-owning residents who have made life decisions to stay here or move to here. Based on prior items must be formalized. Perhaps the fairer in some cases to protect actual residents will due to the fairer to recognize that automatic yes. To rezoning A one land constantly is not always appropriate. Currently, there may not be strong ordinances to control constant rezoning of A one land. Legal documents may not have been recognized. Applications may not have been completed, procedures may not have been followed. Prop, actual property, adjacent property owners may not have been identified. Perhaps we tried too quickly to please developers by running through sixty to ninety days to finish up things instead of twelve months perhaps. If legal documents exist, recognize them and require developers to resolve all disputes involving all parties. Before any rezoning is considered. If procedures are not important, why have them? If they exist, follow them. If they need updating, do so. If applications require or ask for certain information, mandate that it be included. If it's not required, then don't have it on form. But legal documents should be required to be listed and recognized. Residents and business owners depend on what is prevented by the county to be required. And that procedures that are established to be followed. Please give the above mentioned items serious thought. They exert a powerful impact on people's lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone else speak to that?
Corbin Flynn, three nineteen Childers Church Road. Mr. Chairman, Board, and Ms. Elise, please make sure that my comments for this meeting are accurate for the all serving. So I'm particularly wanted to point out your amendment to the adoption of the Louhann County Board of Supervisors on your consent amendment that you just passed. The approved minutes are here. The ones you just passed are here. There's only one difference. On the approved minutes, it says, Minister O'Brien relinquished the gavel to Mrs. Booker. On the minutes that you just passed tonight, it says, Minister O'Brien relinquished the gavel to Mrs. Booker and attended the meeting via Zoom from his car to attend the meeting. I'm apologize for whatever happened in your case, but the word funeral, funeral did not come up in the beginning of that meeting. Mrs. Booker said, I, uh, offered her condolences, but the word funeral never came up, which is part of the provision of the state, by the way. That's why this has been brought to you guys, for you guys to pass this, to hope that, well, we put it in the minutes. So that now it's okay that it had a funeral. It was never said, go back and listen to it, we're here, we can listen to it ourselves. So the word funeral was not in there, so it should not be in the minutes. Now, this is where you have an opportunity. The board can reconsider. You can actually go back and change something that you voted on tonight. You need to do that. Now, Mr. Payne is not going to want you to do that. No, please don't do this. But what you can do is you can make it right. You can take that out, which you just put in, which does not exist. And then if you choose not to take it out, then you're blatantly lying to the public and to the meeting and, and to yourself, quite frankly. It did not say funeral. What it should say, and I know you're not going to say this, but what it should have said was, Mister O'Brien is attending this meeting via Zoom, which Louhann County has no provision for which a board member to currently do so. Mister O'Brien then violated the bylaws and the rules of the practice and procedure of Louhann County Board of Supervisors by relinquishing the gavel to the Mrs. Booker, not Mrs. Booker, to Mrs. Booker. And then, Miss Booker then offered her condolences to Mister O'Brien. That's the facts. That's what happened. What you guys just passed on a consent agenda is a lie. Plain and simple. Mistake, lie, you can call it whatever you want, but it did not happen. So you can live with that. And you can live with whatever the circumstances out of it are, or you can fix that at least tonight. You may not fix all the other processes and symptoms like you guys were talking about earlier. You know, new processes that you like procedure and things like that. You may not go back and fix all those things. Actually, don't expect you to. But you have an opportunity to stand up right now and fix what is wrong. Each and every one of you leaders, set the right example. Or let everybody know that it's okay to not do things right. Wrong, right. There is no gray area. You're either here, wrong, or you're right. You make a mistake, you fix it. You made a mistake tonight. Okay? It's plain and simple. Pull it up. Let's listen to it. Let's everybody hear what was said in the first five to seven minutes of that meeting. The word funeral wasn't put out there to Mr. O'Brien, I'm sorry. Okay? So, um, think about this, folks. I know you're probably going to have a little bit of a meeting afterwards. And Mr. Payne, he's gonna spend a lot of time and tell you what you shouldn't do, whatnot. Don't talk to Corbin Flynn, don't talk to Senator Burley. That's terrible. Don't you think that's terrible? That you've been put in that position, that you can't even have a conversation with anybody? I support each and every one of you guys, and you guys, believe it or not. Do things right. That's all I ask. Do things right. Is that, is that that difficult? The box socks with you guys. You've allowed the administration to lead you down this path. So, to a certain extent, your fault. Thank you.
I would like to let the record show that I did request in advance of the meeting if I would be excused from attending personally. And sent that information to staff and to the county attorney and was told that I could attend that meeting virtually. Therefore, that's what I did. And because I was the president, I passed the gavel down to Mrs. Booker. I was in New York to stand in Pennsylvania for the funeral of my eighty-five-year-old uncle who passed unexpectedly a couple of days before. So that's what happened in that meeting.
And it was during the, during the, I have to do that.
So, uh, after we're made, make sure that we're following the bonds as far as I understand.
All right. Is, is there anyone else who'd like to speak publicly? Do you have anyone online?
Yes, Mr. World.
Ms. DiGuano?
Hello, thank you very much. Donna DiGuano, one four eight Crete Myrtle Drive, Palmyra. And I would like to comment, I, I want to echo what Ms. Morris said. And I do have great sympathy in this situation for Corbin Flynn. And I would really hope that you would listen to what he had to say and take that into consideration. Um, uh, all my comments are said with great respect to you guys. I talked to everybody here on the panel, uh, commissioners and, uh, administrators. But I've been listening and going to these meetings for about a year now. And what's happening to me now is the question of who's the next Corbin Flynn? And that's a very troubling question, because over the course of a year, you guys have made many missteps that have, that have come into near, near hits to good landowners, good business people, good citizens that pay their taxes, have made an investment in the community. And, and are, are good stewards of their position. Now, I can cite several examples, and one would be obviously Corbin Flynn. Nothing that went with Corbin Flynn went right. Maybe it was all technically legal, but they were all mistakes. And you can hide behind process, fine, do that. But let's recognize now that we're all sitting with a metal shed and a chain link fence. And if you guys vote, voted for that, I really got to question the wisdom of people that are trying to upgrade property. For a man who put in a nice facility, Jefferson Pharmacy, good construction, uh, lovely Nahor. And now we're bounded between it with metal shed and chain link fence. And I don't understand the wisdom behind that. So I would like to see what the board could do for a solution to right this bad mistake. We are, we are a gateway. We are the first edge coming into Louhann, and you just made it look junky. But I guess maybe metal sheds have become in fashion somewhere along the way, I don't know. Um, but let's go back. This came also up with Cunningham Creek. Notification went to them late. Corbin Flynn isn't even in your G I S system. Why is that? Let's look at that. That's very important. The county needs to do better by its citizens, and you're not. Cunningham Creek, they skated by, you couldn't, you, they got enough time to get it back together. And I believe Chris Fairchild was instrumental in setting that one correct. And that was a lucky stroke for those people. People who made a big investment getting tourism into this county, which is desperately needed. And that facility of the, uh, electrical facility had been there from, from nineteen thirty-two, and you're rushing that through. Nineteen thirty-two. Okay, so you had to do that quickly. Right. Now let's look at what happened to Ms. Morris and Bobby Morris and Lake Monticello when the lawyer failed to recognize the land deed. Who you just gave a pay raise to, so that makes a lot of sense too. But they would be in the middle of a lawsuit this summer. Luckily, we dodged that bullet. And that was pure luck. So that, they would have been spending their quality summer in law, in court, paying lawyers and using their money, their equity to right some bad wrong that a lawyer, a smash and grab on land deeds for Louhann County. That isn't a good look at all. And if you guys think it is, that's, that's a big misstep in my estimation. So we have to do better. You have to concentrate in these meetings. If you're looking at these, these, uh, these rezonings, look at it as if it was your property. Would you want a metal shed? You just devalued Palmyra. You just, not Palmyra, because it's not, that's your territory. Nahor, that's, that's where this is going in. You devalued Corbin Flynn. Who is going to be the next Corbin Flynn? You should ask yourself that question every time you sit there, because you cannot do this repeatedly to the citizens. And that's where I will leave you tonight. But I will say this, don't forget to close your meeting tonight. And when you leave, don't forget to turn off the lights and lock the door, because that's important. Thank you.
Is there anyone else online? Anyone else in the room? I don't see anybody. I just want to make sure I give everyone up. All right. Seeing no more, I will now close the second round of public comment. Mr. Ryan, are you going to propose me?
Mr. Chairman, who's by County Board, is by enter into the percentage of positions, uh, section two dot two dash three seven A three, real estate, section two dot two dash three seven A five, prospective industry, section two dot two dash three seven A seven, litigation of the Pro Virginia nineteen fifty seven minute for the purposes of discussing real estate, work union, real estate acquisition, progressive into prospective industry, prospective business litigation, quickly properties LLC and science prosper, Nahor and sewer project. I'm sorry, science prosper, water and sewer.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Ryan, second round of the speaker, all the favors say aye. Oppose? Chair votes aye, we're now closing. Chair goes down, we are now closing session.
Don't forget to do your.
Motion to it. We got to, we got to come out of closed session then motion to it.
But so she.
Stand. Session here is all the force realizes that's here advice certified to the best of each members not only one only public business matters lawfully exempt from open near content center. Section two dot two dash three seven eleven here the code region nineteen fifty S million and two only said close business matters as a right notify the motion by which the closing was convened with her discussed or considered.
Do you have a second? Ms. Eager.
Hi.
Mr. Booker. Mr. O'Brien. Mr. Fairchild. Chair votes I motion passes five to zero. Mr. Brian, hold on. Mr. O'Brien made the motion. Ms. Booker, uh, seconded. Mr. O'Brien. Till what time is it right now?
Well, talk.
Huh?
Ten thirty.
Ten ten. Eleven o'clock.
Eleven o'clock.
All right. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mr. O'Brien, seconded by Ms. Eager, all in favor, six five, I'm saying aye. Opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion passes five zero. Uh. Now, Mr. O'Brien, you, you and Mr. Fairchild were talking about something.
Well, I mean, I mean, you came up a little bit earlier about whether or not the meeting, whether I was rightfully excluded from the meet or.
Included.
Included in the meeting, whether I had the right to be in that meeting or not. Um, uh, through an electronic format and, you know, was brought up that, uh, you know, wording around whether or not the term funeral was or wasn't in the minutes. And I, I don't know if it makes sense to include the, um, the electronic information that I sent requesting that I was going to be out of the meeting after the specific reasons and having that checked so that we could see if that was the case. And I also kind of feel like, you know, we've had a lot of people ask whether or not we can rescind or not rescind, and I, I just feel like we just need to have a clear statement on that myself.
I, I agree and, and I've, um, I've actually, I got a statement here that I can read after our conversation. I want to make a motion that we, that we as a board make a state so the citizens are clear on, on what we believe our actions to have been. So.
Oh, Ms. Eager, Ms. Booker, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, let me, why don't you go ahead and. If, uh, we need to say a statement.
Why don't we do it with the motion?
I want, I want Mr. Payne's thoughts on whether that meeting was, whether I was excused electronically or not, and, and whether there's any validity to the argument.
I have previously given you the opinion that we did in fact have a policy in effect. Prior to that, the meeting was done, I think it was done in two twenty twenty.
Twenty twenty to beginning of COVID.
And, uh, it was ineffective in the night of that meeting. And your actions were in all respects in compliance with that policy, which is consistent with it's. It essentially tracks the, the, the realm statute. So in my opinion, it was proper for you to participate. And as you did.
And should, should my electronic communication be included in the minutes or not?
Well, if it wasn't presented for me, it's not part, it shouldn't be part of the minutes. But I think the.
Was it a part of the process of that meeting?
Yes, but it, but it. It's not part of the process of the meeting. That's the point. If, if there's a, if you sent an, an email to Mr. Sheridan, for example, this is the way you're supposed to do it.
I did. I think.
We can supplement that. That's not part of this one.
And I think, did you send me an email too?
I, I think I copied the board, copied the entire board and asked Mr. Galt to verify that I couldn't be excluded.
Yeah. And I think it was clear from the context that everybody knew where you were and that you were in fact on route to, to a funeral high state.
And, and my passing the gavel as chair to another member, that doesn't violate any procedural orders.
Well, what should have happened is Mrs. Booker should have been elected to do it, but obviously she's the senior member. And, uh, she has historically been the one that the gavel is passed off to if the chairman or vice chairman can't act.
And I believe I asked if there was any objection to that.
I think you did. And they, and, and clearly the, the, the other members of the board accepted that. Because they proceeded with the meeting and she chaired the meeting and, uh, there were no objections to it. And she went forward. In fact, a lot of these irregularities are cured if there, if the board approves things.
Okay. So the meeting was in that, in essence, in order.
The meeting was in order. The thing that makes this really quite frustrating is that even if you were found not to be properly participating in the meeting, it didn't make any difference. Because you still had a, a live forum. Mr. Sharon wasn't here. But you still had a live forum because you had Mrs. Eager, Mrs. Booker and Mr. Fairchild present in person. The, the motion was made by Mrs. Eager. And the vote was four to nothing. If your vote were to come out of that, the vote would have been three to none. So in my judgment. That makes the whole argument dubious.
Okay. So I know Chris and I, we've been talking about this, you know, back and forth a little bit because we're, you know, clearly we're, we feel like. You know, it's important that citizens understand where we do stand and, you know, there, there's, I think. You know, it, it, people can disagree with the decisions that we're taking or not taking, but I think, you know, for me personally, and, and my conversations with some of the other board members along the way, we feel like we acted. You know, as we would in any other, um, I know, Chris, you wanted to say something.
Well, I would just agree with that and, and we feel the need to convey that, um, that our processes were right and lawful and, um. That we have citizens that need to hear that.
So. All right. That's, that's why you got, you said you got a motion right there.
So I'll do it as a motion. Um. I move that. We, the board of supervisors, let's see, I move that we, uh. We approve the following statement. The board of supervisors has reviewed the actions of the June fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting. And finds that the actions it took at such meetings, at such meeting to be proper and lawful.
Do we have a second?
I'd like to second that.
Okay. We got a motion made by Mr. Fairchild and seconded by Ms. Ziger. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? And I was not present on June fifteenth, but I have been present for all the review and I agree and will vote aye as well. Motion passes five zero. And we have a motion to adjourn.
So I'll move.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Booker, seconded by Mrs. Eager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.